Good evening. It's Monday, July 22nd, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item. It's welcoming the new building commissioner. Hi, Chris. I'm Mimi. Welcome. Thank you very much for coming.
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
So my intention, and maybe others on the board will have other questions, but my intention was to just first welcome you. We're very happy to have you and to find out from you how the Planning Board can best work with you.
Oh, thanks. So far, it's been a really friendly collaborative environment coming into the town. Started July 1st, just to confirm for everybody. And I've had the fortunate opportunity to catch up with Karina, the town planner, and she's been very helpful. And Laura, in my office, and all the players that helped with going through zoning stuff and Planning Board and whatnot. So, so far, so good. And I don't really have any huge comments as far as what more I need. Just hoping that moving into the future, I could reach out, ask a question here or there, and talk with everybody when the need arises.
Great to hear. Absolutely. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, welcome. The town appreciates you coming on board. You know, I think we rely on our chief zoning enforcement officer heavily in this town to carefully review the plans that we approve, know our permitting process, and work collaboratively with us to, you know, see our planning decisions carried out the way that we pass these plans. So I really look forward to working with you. And, you know, please do always feel free to reach out.
Same. Thank you. Sounds good.
Hi, Chris. Nice to meet you. Marnie Houlihan, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. And we do work very collaboratively with most of the teams and departments across the town. So we appreciate your support and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thanks. Sounds good.
Hi, Chris. Debbie Demiria. Good to meet you and nice to see you. Just want to say thank you for already. We're seeing your very well-thought-out emails and communications to the Planning Board. Just want to welcome you. We're delighted to have you. And the same, if there's anything that I can do or the Board can do for you, we look forward to working collaboratively. So thank you very much and good luck with everything.
Thanks.
Good evening, Chris. Lisa Brascio. It's a pleasure to meet you. I also welcome you to Southborough. I look forward to working with you. I'll reiterate what Debbie said. I think the emails that you had already provided for the next hearing that we're having, I think were very well thought out and very helpful to me as we move forward. So again, thank you so much. Welcome to Southborough, and we look forward to working with you.
I appreciate that. Always open to any insights, too, to help make those letters make more sense. So feel free to always reach out. Thank you.
And Chris, this is Karina speaking. I'm not sure you met my assistant, Colleen Stansfield. She mans the front of the office. So if there's anything you need and I'm not there, she's there to help you and assist as well. All right. And again, I appreciate all the feedback and collaboration already that we've had on all the building permits and already the public hearings that are in front of us. So thanks so much. We're glad you're here.
Thanks, Karina. It's been a pleasure so far. Colleen's been right there with a bunch of emails and keeping me up to date with what's going on. So I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for coming, and happy to meet you. And we hopefully can keep this collaboration moving forward. And just to reiterate, your questions on our next hearing were very, very helpful, and appreciate that. So thank you.
Great. Sounds good.
Anyone else?
No. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. You got it. I'm going to sign off. Have a great meeting, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, the One Stop Grant Route 9 Study.
Hello?
Welcome, Mr. Dennington.
Hi. So as you know, I'm Andrew Dennington. I'm the vice chair of the Select Board, and thank you for having me on your agenda this evening. So I'm here tonight as a representative of the Select Board just to speak about the upcoming FY 2026 One Stop Grant Cycle. I'm actually not really going to follow these particular slides, but I know they're in your packet, and you probably had an opportunity to review them. Leah Emerson was scheduled to be here today, but she fell ill. So it's not just me this evening. I think she might be in the online audience, though. So anyway, the upcoming FY 26 One Stop Grant Cycle launches in January of '25 with expressions of interest considered as early as February 2025. I think that most of you are already familiar with the Community One Stop for Growth Program. It was launched in 2021, and it's a single application portal that streamlines applications for multiple state grant programs. It has an emphasis on grants for zoning development and particularly community development. And the idea is that rather than be a passive reviewer, the state acts as a partner with municipalities to help guide them and match them with the correct grant programs. So it's a very active program. In the last three years, One Stop has awarded a little under $400 million for 869 grants to 243 communities. However, Southborough has not been one of them, even though this is a real opportunity. So we want to do better. And during our goal-setting meeting of the Select Board in June, we made this a real priority and set a specific goal for this upcoming year, to submit a successful One Stop grant application and to focus on a study of Route 9 zoning. And obviously, this is something that is within the bailiwick of the Planning Board, and it makes sense to let you know about this. So that's why I'm really here tonight. I think the reasons to focus on Route 9 zoning are pretty obvious. We're all concerned about continued vacancy along Route 9. There's too many empty office buildings, and it's a post-pandemic environment where demand for suburban office space, it's unclear whether there's going to be an uptick in that type of demand anytime soon. We hear often about people want to see mixed-use development of the type that we don't currently have along Route 9. I know the slides that Leah put together, including that slide, really emphasize how community surveys have consistently shown that. Certainly, from the Select Board perspective, fiscally, we need to stabilize and hopefully grow our commercial tax base. The proportion of our tax base, which is commercial versus residential, is just each year moving in the wrong direction, which means that the cost of providing the same services becomes more expensive for the residential taxpayer, even without increasing the overall spend. I took a quick look at the town zoning code before coming over here, and it looks like most of our zoning along Route 9 is governed by a zoning code, which is enacted in 1993. Certainly, a lot has changed in those 31 years. We'd want to have zoning for the current types of uses that we currently want. Certainly, there's a great deal of overlap between what we're thinking about with this One Stop grant application and the 2021 Master Plan, which also set as goals, looking at mixed use, reducing office vacancy. And I also think that it's an opportunity, because the timing is such, that if we submit the grant application for this in the spring, and we are successful, the real work under the grant wouldn't begin until after the MBTA Communities zoning effort, which I know the Planning Board is very heavily focused on this time, would be done. So in thinking about why we have not been successful in getting awarded a One Stop grant before, we think that, and I'm speaking here, just what the Select Board has observed, we, the Select Board primarily, we've just begun the process too late in terms of thinking what we want to focus on and getting going. As I said, it's a unique cycle, and they allow expressions of interest to be filed in February in advance of full-blown applications. And during that expression of interest phase, One Stop can give you some feedback on what's good about your proposed grant and what's not. So this year, we want to be really involved in actually starting to prepare the application in September. And Leah Emerson's now been here for about a year, and she's an excellent resource to help us achieve this goal this time around. So my main purpose in appearing here tonight is just to put this on your radar screen for several reasons. One, obviously, the Planning Board would play a principal role in considering the enactment of any potential zoning changes that the grant study might recommend. The Planning Board and the Planning Department have knowledge that could make an application more successful, as well as resources that could help provide the type of in-kind grant that's often requested to submit the match request. And that should be the subject of some discussion before the application, which is submitted. So as background, in 2021, the EDC took a lead in submitting an application for something very similar to what we're thinking of here. They applied for $65,000, and of that, the town was putting up a $6,000 in-kind match, which is in terms of hours of personnel, then split between the EDC Coordinator and the Planning Department. So again, I think it makes sense to have a discussion about what is an in-kind match before we submit the application and coming to you now. So the bottom line is, we'd welcome the Planning Board's support for this grant application, certainly at least at a high level conceptually, and then also at any tangible level that you can provide. So happy to, again, I'm keeping this very high level at this point, just providing kind of a roadmap of what we want to do by the spring, but happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Stein?
Yeah. Thanks for coming in, Andrew. I feel like this is a good exercise, particularly in the feedback that we've gotten, that our zoning is, you know, somehow too restrictive to attract businesses in the area that you're talking about. I do harken back to this one meeting when Leah was here, and I asked, like, what specific zoning changes, you know, do we need to make? And this is exactly what the information that's, this is the kind of, to me, the missing piece of the puzzle, is, you know, I mean, I think this board is certainly willing and able to enact zoning changes, but we just need to know the what and get, you know, granular. Because in my experience, even the most rudimentary of zoning changes takes, you know, a lot of review and discussion and, you know, having the public on board, the other residents. It's always easier said than done. So I think having a credible study, and so I'd like to see, you know, what zoning changes they're having in mind, and what the results would, you know, what they project the results would be in terms of impact on the town, good, bad, or otherwise. Thanks.
Ms. Houlihan?
Good evening, Mr. Dennington. Thank you for coming in. I think this is a very good sign that you are here and speaking with the Planning Board. I personally think there was a recent Planning Board election process, a lot of the voices that attended were upset about the Route 9 zoning. And I think that this is something the public is interested in understanding and trying to help be participating in how we scope it. So while the high-level timeline, and this is a high-level conversation, I do think it's important to understand what is the process you're mapping, who is involved, because I do think some zoning board should be involved, some resident should be involved, Planning Board should be involved. I would actually volunteer. I know how much fun that would be for both of our committees. But I do think it's an important thing for us to do, because scoping the study is going to be very important. We know we have septic water issues. We need to understand the infrastructure with traffic. And so I think really making sure that we compile all the right elements for the framework of the study is going to be important. Building Commissioner, as well as, like, Board of Health, like, I do think it's going to be a lot of input to make the study the right study, so that it actually can be influenced and used in a town meeting procession while we do some zoning updates. So I commend the Select Board for moving forward with the One Stop Grant. I know that we, as a town, have to have the MBTA Communities accepted to be, actually be, have a One Stop Grant feasible. So the hope is that at special town meeting, we can get this bylaw approved for the MBTA Communities, because without that, I'm not even sure you can apply for a One Stop Grant. So this will have to work together, and I'm committed to working with you if you guys are open to it and my Planning Board allows me to partner with you. So thanks for coming.
You can do all the work you want, Marnie. Mr. Maria?
Hi, Andrew. Thanks. Thanks very much. I was really excited to see this and that you're coming here before us for this. I would just like to say, I mean, I think we all want to see more vibrant Route 9. And it's been like that for a lot of years, and it's really, really terrific that, you know, the hard work that you and others have done on the Master Plan when you were on it, and led by this Planning Board, that some of these goals could come to fruition. On the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we sometimes take a look at these goals and recommendations, and we know some of them are just not moving. So what you're proposing is to move some of them. And of course, Leah has been very involved in that. So I think it's really nice the way that you've all come together and you're here tonight. I would say I have one thought about Route 9 in that it's very loud. And in terms of mixed use, and I'm a huge proponent of mixed use. My career has been in Boston and Cambridge. I love driving back and seeing a father and a son carrying a pizza and walking home down the street. We don't really have that along Route 9, and we have very noisy trucks. So as part of, you know, the study, I think that, I'm not sure if there should be some kind of a noise component. We've got trucks that check brakes and jake brakes and things like this, all kinds. There's racing at night, like crazy things happening if you're living along Route 9. And I don't even live on Route 9, but I can hear it, and I'm like thousands of feet away. So I want it to be a perfect environment for mixed-use development. I think it can be. I think we have to have other considerations, such as, you know, making it a suitable environment for people to live, so it's not noisy, and also, you know, dark sky and all those other things that the Planning Board's been a proponent of. But I'm just really thrilled that you're bringing this vision and coordinating this effort, and I, you know, I really support it. Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Welcome, Andrew. Thank you for coming tonight. I think this is a great discussion. I think it's been a long time coming. As Marnie said, you know, some of the septic and water issues and whatnot we have on Route 9, I think are going to be some level of a challenge. I think it's unfortunate that we recently just lost Tomaso's, which is in one of our mixed-use buildings. I don't know if EDC or someone has reached out to get a better idea of what could have been done better, or, you know, what the reasoning was if it was just the economics of them leaving. I think that we've seen a changing business structure as well, with more companies going remote and less people being in an office. So I think that's going to affect vacancies as well. So I really hope, within the study, that we could combat, or how we could combat some of these changes that are taking place, that maybe five years ago weren't so much an issue when the vacancy rates were higher. I think we're living in a very different world than we were pre-COVID. So I would hope that, you know, any study that's done could take into, some of this into consideration as far as future zoning and how we could potentially combat that. Also, I know there was much hope for the downtown district when it was done, as far as adding, you know, mixed use and looking to have a viable, walkable downtown. I know to date, that really hasn't taken place. So I'm hopeful that as we look to Route 9, something that can attract our businesses as well. And as Deb said, I think it's probably a great place for housing as well. So I think there's a way to do something there. I would really be interested in, Marnie, thank you for stepping forward on this. I know it's something that we're all interested on the Board. So again, thank you for spearheading it. I think there's a ton of questions as we move forward. But this is a great first start. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you. It's good to be proactive and start this early than what's happened in the past, like, this is due tomorrow. So I appreciate that. I do have some concerns about promoting too much housing on Route 9. We have, you know, three 40Bs in front of us now, potential for a fourth. We also have the, one of the overlays for the multifamily is on Route 9. And so we need to still have business on Route 9, because that's our major commercial corridor and not push too much for housing. The other concern is that MAPC's Route 9 corridor analysis, they projected a 218% increase in traffic in Southborough, the highest of any of that corridor, if it was built out. So we should think about how to mitigate that. And my other question, not specific to Route 9, but specific to the One Stop, is that they have a Brownfields redevelopment grant? Does Atwood qualify as a Brownfields?
That's a good question. And just in terms of timing, this is getting a little off-topic, but in our draft, really rough fall town meeting draft warrant, there's a placeholder for funds for remediation of the lead paint in the ground at Atwood.
Yeah.
Now, the idea would be to do that sooner rather than later. One Stop is thinking about, you wouldn't know if you got the grant until September 2025. So, but to your question, is it eligible? I don't know. That's a good question.
Ms. Cook?
This is a really timely question. I had brunch this morning with a gentleman who used to, he's done a lot of things, but he ran the Brooklyn Housing Authority, and I described the Atwood problem we had. The meeting was all about affordable housing. And so I said, you know, I basically said, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. And we started on this, and instead of ending up with affordable housing, we've got a polluted site.
Lead field, yeah.
And he said, you know that's going to, you know you can get a grant to pay for 30% of that from this new Brownfields piece. That's exactly what he said. So it very well may help us pay for some of it. So.
Because as we know, when we think the contamination is this, it often ends up being something larger. So I don't think it would hurt having state money, too. And just to reiterate, we need to have, we need to be compliant with 3A, or else we're not, we can't qualify for any of the One Stop. So thank you. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
I don't think they further say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? No?
Yes. We currently have seven attendees, six. No hands raised.
Okay.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare, major site plan approval for a change of use. Karina?
All right. So first things first. So while you get oriented, I'll read the legal ad, as we're required to do.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing notice for major site plan approval of 337 Turnpike Road, map 25 parcel 12B. Per 172-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. We have to wait, like, four minutes.
Oh, sorry about that.
I just realized. Yeah. So I'll, so we'll hold.
Two minutes?
Why don't we just clear up what we're doing with the next meeting, as far as who's chairing or anything, or we all sit?
Oh, do you want to do that?
Yeah. It'll just take a second.
So the question is whether to push it a week, or, so I can come on the 17th. We'll just leave for vacation on Tuesday, the 19th. I'm sorry. I keep saying the wrong date.
Okay.
So I can do that unless...
It's probable that I won't be able to attend at all.
Okay.
But I will be able to make the other public hearings. So I'll just do a balance form for that one night.
Okay. Unless there's a preference to push it a week? No? Okay.
Right, because there'll be one more meeting prior to the special town meeting.
Town meeting.
Which we hold here, a meeting prior to the town meeting, anyway. If that makes sense.
I mean, Mimi, would you prefer to, I mean, it's your vacation. Would you prefer to leave on Monday? I mean, I'm open to go in the following week if we need to, you know, just so you can not have to delay your vacation a day. I mean...
No, that's okay. I think it's helpful to have a couple of weeks before town meeting.
Okay.
That's all right.
So the meeting...
I'd rather do this than vacation.
Just for clarity, the meeting is still the 19th, then?
Still the 19th.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Do minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting that took place on June 3rd, 2024.
Second.
For discussion, I think you were here then, weren't you, Jesse? Weren't you a person on the 3rd? Yeah, that was the last mapping session. So on line 11, it says that Jesse was present via Zoom, but he was here in the flesh, or actually at the senior center.
Yeah, I was at that.
And then on line 32, I would add site plan before approval?
Line 32?
Yeah.
Subject to site plan approval.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 17th, 2024.
Second.
For discussion, line 133. I would put... I would put chosen by tables 1, 5, 6, and 8, and then the Southville location, chosen by tables 4, 5, 6, and 7.
Say the first one one more time. Chosen by?
Tables 1, 5, 6, and 8.
Eight. Okay, for...
And then it has...
The Planning Board agreed with the shift to the eastern edge of the commuter rail. The planning board agreed with the shift to the eastern edge of the commuter rail station and include following, the following is area one of the MTC overlay, chosen by tables 1, 5, 6, and 8. And then...
Those were chosen by tables 4, 5, 6, and 7.
4, 5, 6, and 7, okay. After lot 8.
Yeah.
Chosen by tables 4, 5, 6, and 7. Okay.
Yeah. Just so it doesn't look like the planning board just picked stuff. Yeah. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lehan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
The motion is to approve the meeting minutes from June 18, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Sorry, Mimi, this was for the 18th?
Yeah.
I just have a question, if I may, sorry.
Okay.
Based on our agenda, the line 249, discussion of MTC town meeting survey, I don't believe that was on our agenda. Should we strike that whole, while I appreciate Bridget taking the time to add it, that wasn't on our agenda?
Agenda, is that what?
It was on the select board's agenda, yes. It was a discussion they had.
But it wasn't on ours?
But it wasn't on ours, so I'm just wondering why we would have it in the minutes.
Good catch, Lisa.
Hold on.
She included all of theirs.
Let me just look real quick. This was the 18th agenda.
Oh, so that was at the select board meeting? Yeah, so we had the trees and appointments.
Right, not the review of...
You're correct.
So I just didn't know.
I would agree with you that we...
So we'd be striking lines 249 through what?
270. 270.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
So...
Thank you.
To approve as amended, June 18.
Second.
Any more discussion? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Lehan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashia, yes.
Okay. Public hearing, take two, sorry about that. 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare, major site plan approval, change of use. Karina.
All right, we'll just do this again. So this is the legal notice, July 2, 2024. Public hearing notice, major site plan approval, 337 Turnpike Road, map 25 parcel 12B. Per 174-10 of the Southborough zoning code, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 22, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Thomas J. McCallum Hearing Room, second floor townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. to consider the application of Gracious Home Adult Day Healthcare Center LLC regarding the property at 337 Turnpike Road for major site plan approval. This hearing concerns an interior buildout on the first floor of 14,545 square feet for an adult daycare facility in the industrial park district within the northwest corner of the parcel, in, with the northeast west corner of the parcel in the industrial district, sorry. A copy of the plans and application may be reviewed on the planning board's webpage, www.southboroughma.gov, Agenda Center Planning Dashboard-29, or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom or remote participation by going online to the link at www.southboroughma.gov/674/virtual-meetings. Mimi Latrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. And let me give you the quick update. So we received the application from Bowler Engineering, who's representing the applicant, which is Mr.?
Jen.
Jen, yes.
Thank you.
I prepared a completeness review on June 28, and we filed the application with the town clerk on July 2. We received the application fees, a legal ad was posted with the town clerk, and the legal ads were in the newspaper on July 8, and then the following Monday, July 15, which brings us to this evening's public hearing opening for the major site plan approval. Legal ads were sent to the towns and agencies as required. Submission was distributed to the town departments. We received feedback from the building department, which was provided to the applicant and to the planning board members. One was a letter that became dated that I think was used at the ZBA indicating from the building commissioner that the use for the adult daycare was allowed in the industrial park zone. Then we received information from the ZBA admin that the special permit was approved for the use of an adult daycare and also for more than one use on the site, which requires a special permit, and they were both approved. We received the green cards and the mail, the certified return receipt, green cards and the mail, white mailing receipts last Thursday as required, so everything is in order there. Then on July 18, I, we received a submission correcting the plans based on my review of them because they did not go to Fussin O'Neil for review, which is our town's engineering consultant, because it's an interior rehab. So it was basically parking and exterior and making sure everything's in order. So I did that, and submission two was to respond to those comments. So I reviewed the plan, and those comments were addressed. Submission number two was provided to the town departments. In addition, there was an email from the building commissioner regarding some questions on operations. Those questions were answered. We received from Attorney Bingham on Friday, which I wasn't here, but Colleen passed it on, and we received another copy today from Bowler Engineering answering those operational questions. Those were provided to the planning board and also back to the building commissioner. And I also provided those to the Board of Health. So one of the comments I had was that we needed feedback from the Board of Health to see if this change of use from office space to adult daycare in this approximately 14,500 square foot of space would impact the septic system. Dennis Costello, who's the Board of Health, designated, look at septic systems, he's on vacation until Wednesday. We did receive a copy of the current septic system plan. I didn't have a chance to look at it in detail. I believe it was an approved plan from the prior site development, but we do have a copy of it. Nonetheless, we still need that information, which should the planning board move to approve this evening, we could make it a condition. That being said, that brings us here to this evening. Let me just make sure I didn't miss anything. The application included waiver requests generally, it was in a chart form, but generally relating to things that were exterior to the building, like landscaping, lighting, things that aren't being changed. Let's see here, landscaping, you know, showing topography exterior of the building, let's see, drainage calculations, they're not changing anything outside. The sign, they're actually using the same sign structure and just replacing it with their business sign, and basically those were the items. Let's just see. And again, I did forward the information on the operations to the Board of Health because they were looking for more detail, so when he gets back, he'll have that information ready. All right, that brings us to tonight, and I think Bowler Engineering is representing the applicant, and Attorney Neil Bingham is also here representing the applicant.
Thank you, Karina. Welcome. If you could introduce yourself, and if you have any presentation, you've got the floor.
My name is Neil Bingham. I am counsel for the applicant, Gracious Home Adult Day Healthcare Center LLC. Sitting beside me is the managing member of the LLC, the applicant, Tony Zheng, and the third member of our team tonight, Matt Murva from Bowler. I have a list of things I would like to have said to you today, but I believe Karina Quinn just did it amazing.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Karina's amazing like that.
I gotta stop doing the whole thing because you're here. It's from my old days. I have to say it all, sorry.
What I wanted to do is give you a little introduction of everyone, a little summary, but I think that you've heard a great summary there, and there's nothing really that I would like to add to that. On Friday, we did submit a supplement answering some of the questions of Commissioner Wong. These are very thoughtful questions, and it was nice for us to meet him by email as well. But we're here today, number one, for Mr. Murva to present the plan to you and for the rest of us to be here to answer any questions that you may have that may be our supplemental memo, even if it touched on it, we may have led to additional questions. So what I'd like to do is just turn the floor over to Mr. Murva. I'm going to exchange seats with him, but we're all here to answer questions.
Thank you, Neil. Again, Matt Murva with Bowler. And just to echo what Neil said, I think Karina's done a great job of kind of running through where we're at here. It's a little bit of a unique situation because we really aren't changing anything on the site at all. The reason we're here, I believe, you know, for major site plan review is because of the change of use, but, but we're not touching anything exterior other than the sign as we just mentioned. So our plan, which I can walk you through, is essentially an existing conditions plan, just enumerates the parking and how we meet the requirements for the counts associated with the, with the new use, as well as the uses that will continue to be on-site here as part of this two-story structure. So you can either look behind you, or I have it right here on paper, but essentially, this is the structure here that the new use will be in, the adult daycare. The entry is off of Route 9, so it's a right-in and right-out only, obviously, on the westbound lane heading towards Worcester. All parking remains where it is. The entry is on the west side or left side of the building here. There are accessible spaces on-site that will accommodate all the parking needs. We were going to dedicate these 13 spaces here to the van operation, which is actually how most people are going to access the site. There are 10 to 15 employees who will be here on a daily basis, but most people get here by being picked up by the operations vans, which are like a Sprinter van-style vehicle, not even really a shuttle bus, more of a smaller van. So those, those will make a few trips a day each and bring people to the location. So really, the, the parking needs, we're showing compliance with the parking requirement of about 54 spaces for this use. We don't expect to need more than, you know, 15 or 20 of them on any given day. Ordinarily, this would probably be more of a building permit process, but again, because we're, we're before, we were before the zoning board for the change of use, obviously need to come in and discuss the site plan. So really, we're here to kind of answer questions that you might have beyond what I've, what I've already mentioned here. I just don't want to take up too much more time if, if there aren't any, any concerns.
All set?
I think so.
Mr. Stein.
So do the vans pick people up at their homes?
Yes.
Okay. And that's just anywhere metro west? Like how far? Just out of curiosity, like, how far away is the farthest client?
You know, usually, like, you know, for the distance, we can show, like, you know, within like 30 minutes.
Okay.
You know, we don't want them to travel too far, but it depends on the traffic. Sometimes, you know, they live really close, but like, you know, during peak hours, that may like, you know, delay the, you know, the, like, you know, the time they get, arrive at the building. But actually, within like normal traffic, 30 minutes, that's the range.
Okay. And just like, what, what happens when they are here, like at your facility?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, you know, we provide, like, you know, door-to-door, like, you know, transportation, you know, they don't need to drive. And when they get here, we provide, like, you know, first of all, we provide, like, you know, the nursing service, you know, we have, like, you know, registered nurses on-site every day. We have, like, you know, trained, you know, nursing aides on-site every day. And besides that, we provide, you know, educational classes, and also for some, like, you know, like, you know, art, like, you know, singing, painting, like, you know, instrument learning, that kind of activities. And also, you know, we take them out for, like, you know, grocery shopping, because most of them, they don't really want to drive, even they can, but, you know, driving is not a good thing for people at that age. That's why we provide, you know, take them to, for grocery shopping, and also for sightseeing, like, "Foxy is in beautiful mountain out there," why not? We take them, you know, for, for, enjoy the life.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks for being part of the town. Appreciate it.
That's my pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Lehan?
Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that, bringing the business to Southborough and for supporting the elder community. I think it's super important. So my questions are three and more technical, just because I've never done a major site plan, when you haven't done anything to the, to the site plan, really, it's all internal. So I know that the septic plan you supplied was approved in 1989, and I know we're waiting for the Board of Health, but is that something that would need to be brought up to code? Or is a 1989 septic plan, do we expect that to meet requirements?
So, great question. The septic system still needs to meet its requirements for, for inspections per Mass DEP, so we're not changing anything with that. We've done a calculation on what we expect our average flows to be, and the architect has provided those numbers. And total for the building, we're looking at about 3,600 gallons per day, and the capacity of the existing system can handle up to 4,000. So we're, we're not increasing the need for any additional capacity here, and as long as the system is, is meeting the requirements that it needs to meet every time DEP inspects it, then we should be in good shape.
Okay. And then the Board of Health, I'm sure, will weigh in?
Yeah, absolutely. So...
When he comes back.
My one concern was that an architect is describing what qualifies as, you know, septic system calculations, et cetera. So, but because we have a backup that, you know, our Board of Health will review that and make sure that works. So the impacts are, because it's going from office space, which has a certain density of parking, to this use, the operational information that we sent to Dennis will hopefully help him establish where it falls in Title V, and that if it's equal to or less impacting, they're good. But if there is an issue with the septic, did someone at Bowler look at the septic design in addition to the architect?
We did. We looked, they, they use Title V calculations to go through the uses, which is the same thing we would do.
An engineer?
Review those as well.
So, about your engineer?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. My second question is, I know in your response around the sign, that nothing's really changing, you're just changing the pylon sign. So, one, should that be on the plan? Because the sign is part of our...
You should answer, but I think the sign is on the plan.
The sign is on the plan.
I missed, must have missed it.
It's, it's right here adjacent to the entry. It's on the stone wall, right in that location there. So that's, that's the sign for all the different tenants in the building, so it's really just changing out the placard for this particular use. That's the one.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I completely missed that.
Thank you, Karina.
Thank you. And then the last question that I had, again, is another technical one, what it says, plan notes, it says, "This plan to be utilized for site plan and zoning board of appeals approvals, only not for construction." Is that something we would go ahead and approve for a major site plan with that contingency in there? Or caveat? I just had never seen that in a plan.
I think that this plan to be utilized for site plan and zoning board of appeals approval only not for construction...
I know there's no construction happening, so I get it.
I think that's just us trying to clarify that. We're not expecting anyone to build any of these site improvements, they're, they're already there. It's really for the parking calculations.
So I would suggest, because there's a couple of other little things that I think they should add on the final set you submit for signature, that you define that is not for site construction, or somehow clarify that it's not for external construction. Because the building permit is gonna be primarily internal. Yeah. Good catch.
Does that clear it up?
Yeah, I think that would be...
Sure.
Those were all my questions. I'm fully supportive of this and really looking forward to you joining our community. So thanks for coming to us.
Thank you.
Ms. Maria.
Hi, and welcome, and I thank you for coming tonight. I have just one small question. I think it was clarified that you will not have a kitchen, but there would be some food delivery. I'm just curious about what type of, you know, what type of trucks or how would that happen during business hours, for example, or anything about that? I think without a kitchen, would you be, you're serving meals, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Breakfast and lunch?
Yeah, we provide, like, two hot meals, breakfast and lunch, every day.
Okay. And is it like a frozen food delivery, kind of?
No, 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 no. It's fresh cooked. You know, we, like, contract with a couple of, like, you know, fully licensed restaurants, and they do, like, you know, delivery, two deliveries for each day, morning and lunchtime. Like, morning time, the food will be, you know, delivered at around 8:30, because, you know, all the participants will be here, the latest will be like 8:45, and by that time, you know, that's the time, you know, we started, like, we start serving the breakfast. And lunchtime, the food will be delivered at around 12:00. You know, 12:15, that's the time we start serving lunch. So we'll make sure the quality and the temperature, everything, you know, food we serve is like, you know, you know, follow all the regulations, for sure.
That's my only question.
By the way, you know, because this is not a, we have another, like, you know, existing facility in Burlington. We have, like, you know, in operation for many years. So, so far, we haven't had any issues with any department, building department, like, you know, Board of Health. We have been, like, you know, had greater relationship with them. So, so far, so good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Welcome to Southborough. I think there's a tremendous need for what you're providing, and I'm thankful that, you know, we could have this in our community. And I think there's families in this community as well that may, you may give them an outlet that they need. So I think that's great, and I thank you for that. I'm very supportive. I wanna also thank you for the responsiveness to the building commissioner's comments. There was a lot of comments there, and I will tell you, it was extremely helpful to me, and it answered most of the questions that I have tonight. So, and also, I wanted to thank you for submitting a complete packet. That makes our job so much easier in being able to move this forward for you. And all I will add is that I would be fine approving this with the condition based on the Board of Health tonight. I see no reason to wait. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Actually, this is our honor to join the, you know, this beautiful community. We just want to do something, you know, for the elderly people. That's our, I feel like, you know, younger generation. That's our goal.
Easy, easy on the elderly there. [laughter]
This is great.
One question. So you said you're gonna use the west entrance, but the shuttles deliver to the south?
The shuttles will probably pull right up to the accessible entry here and then park here. That's all I was trying to point out.
Oh, okay.
That's the, these spaces would be dedicated for the shuttles while they're not out collecting people.
Okay. Because the answers to the building commissioner's questions say the opposite. The applicant anticipates using only the south entrance for daily use of the shuttle vans because this entrance is the exclusive use of the applicant and no other tenant share this?
Right, right here.
So is that...
I think that's what you're pointing out, right?
Yeah, actually, you know, we can use both entrances because, you know, both give us, like, you know, easy access to the building, no problem. But, you know, personally, I prefer using the one at the bottom, which is the south entrance, because, you know, that one, we don't share that entrance with any other tenants.
Okay.
So, like, morning time, you know, we don't bother, you know, like, you know, other, like, you know, users, other, like, you know, visitors, their customers, so we prefer use those entrance at the south.
Okay. So are those doors ADA accessible?
That is right.
Okay. So the shuttle will pull in and then drive around the building, like, deliver to the south and then drive around the building?
Exactly. Yeah, the vans will come in from the, you know, the entrance on the right-hand side, that entrance to the parking lot, make a left turn all the way into the south entrance, stop right there, and make sure, you know, all the doors open on the curb side. So we don't want the elderly people to, like, you know, get off and go around the vehicle to get on the curb.
Oh, okay. That's very important.
We've already thought about that.
Okay.
Safety is always, like, you know, our priority, yeah.
I think that was...
Sorry, I misspoke in there.
No problem, no problem at all. Like I said, we could use that one.
So although there are no additional lights being added, is there lighting there?
You mean inside the building?
No, outside. So for, I don't know, in the wintertime, it's before 7:00, it might not be...
There are lights shown on the site plans, some existing lighting.
Oh, I see.
In those symbols. And then I believe there are some downlights on the building as well. So it's, there's plenty of light on-site for any after-hours entry.
And according to the site plan approval, when this site was developed, there are restrictions on when the lights are on and to turn off a certain amount at night. So this property was recently purchased. It used to be the Trask. And then I think Mr. Walker, I forgot his first name, Jeff Walker, who was previously involved in other things in the town, maintains the second-floor office space and the warehouse in the back. And I think it's either, I think it's a construction management offices now. So it, previously with the Trask, it was real estate management offices. So it kinda transitioned to something very similar, and then this area became available and they stepped up, so. But there are decisions, there are conditions in the original decision about the lights.
And this is a membership?
It's kind of, but it's not like real membership because, you know, we work with, like, you know, some insurance company. You know, they have to become a member of certain insurance companies, then, you know, we can take, we can provide services.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So it's a benefit of some insurance companies?
That's right, yes.
Oh, cool.
Actually, you know, the senior people, you know, if they, you know, qualified for the program, you know, they don't need to pay, you know, any money from their pocket, so it'll be covered by the insurance.
And how many seniors do you expect?
For daily operation, we expect around 100.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll have 10 employees?
15 at least, you know, for daily operation.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
So if I can just add a couple of things...
Yes, sure.
Just to make sure. So this site used to be the two buildings on one lot, and then it was A&R'd years ago. And part of that division, there also was a parking easement that described who gets to use what parking between the two buildings. And there are five or seven spaces along that eastern property line that go through the spaces, and three of them are allocated to one side and four are allocated to the other building. I would ask that, on the plan that you submit to me for the planning board's endorsement for approval, that there's a reference to that parking easement on the plan? If there isn't one yet, I just don't recall. I see it right there, but if you could show more clearly, like hatch, or, I see a line...
Right, that dash line.
It wasn't really clear, because it, what happens is it blends in with this wetland buffer here. So this is the parking easement area right here. And then there are these spaces here, which are allocated to one side or the other. So on the final plan, if you could just, like the A&R shows, just hatch those spaces and then also add a book and a registry of deeds, book and page reference to the deed somewhere in the note, to the parking easement, so that it's very clear in the future that this easement, parking easement exists and what it means. And if at least we have a registry of deeds, book and page reference, someone can look that up. But somewhere in the note, you know, and then also, if...
No problem.
The A&R plan that you included in the application showed these, you know, crosshatched. So in addition to this, maybe just define that somehow so that it's clearer, or explain it, or reference the deed, something like that. I mean, the easement. I keep saying the deed. Okay. Can do it in a note as well, and you need the confirmation from Board of Health. And then if you could just add to the zoning table in the top-right corner, if you go to the top-right corner over here. So just to be clear, right next to this permitted, put the abbreviation for industrial park, IP, in parentheses here, so that it's crystal clear, because it is kinda removed from the zoning table up here. Just so that it's, you know, this is what that zone allows.
Okay.
And then if you could show the outline of the existing septic on the plan underneath the parking lot, so that we have a general idea where the septic is on this site plan. So the septic is right here somewhere, right? And you can just gray it out because it's existing underground and just call it out. Something that gives a boundary that matches what's currently approved. And you know what I'm talking about?
I do. We can do that.
Yeah, just a simple outline and say...
Sure.
...septic system location, approximate location.
Refer to that plan, maybe.
Yeah, maybe something like that, and that way, it won't be missed, and then we'll tack that, you know, and then the Board of Health, if they do want you to make any changes there, you get that approved. Otherwise, a memo or an email from the Board of Health goes in the file that says you are okay, just the way it is.
Okay.
That way it's okay.
Right.
And I think, let's make sure. And that's what I had. And I would only need, if it is approved this evening, I'd need two copies, two hard copies and a PDA of the set revised with a revision date.
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, there are questions from the public.
Oh, that's right. Any questions or comments from anyone in the public? Or anyone on Zoom? On Zoom, please raise your hand.
So glad I have a vice.
Make a motion, the planning board approve major site plan, change of use for 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare.
Second?
Yes.
Do we wanna make a second, but with the contingencies around the Board of Health approval for septic and subject to the changes that were addressed tonight?
Revisions to the plans, and then were there any waivers that you felt needed actual voting for a waiver? Because I think, I think the, I printed it here. Where is it? There it is. Hold on a second.
But most of them were. I didn't.
That's true, too.
So if you go to the waiver list, Karina, it's in the application, Commissioner Wong applied. Here it is.
So we're gonna back up. I'm gonna strike that previous motion. The motion now is to close the public hearing for 337...
Can you come to the microphone?
Yes.
Yeah, so especially given the amount of traffic right here...
If you could introduce yourself and your address.
My name's Jay Burstein. Especially given the amount of traffic here on Route 9, is there an elopement security plan in place for the facility, given the age of the residents and the potential issues that might come up?
What kind of security plan?
Elopement security plan.
That's a great question. Do you know? I'm not sure what that means.
Could you explain what that means? I don't know what that is.
So, so in senior residents, and I don't know the particulars about who will be coming or if there's gonna be any dementia issues or other issues where if there's not enough staff, that might be completely observing the residents there if there's security so that they just can't leave the building and wander into the parking lot and onto Route 9.
Okay. Thank you. I understand the question.
Just before you continue, can you just say your name one more time and your address?
Sure.
My name is Dr. Jay Burstein.
Jay?
I live on Darling Drive, 16 Darling Drive.
Darling Drive?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, so to answer that question, the doors are alarmed so that they cannot leave without supervision. And this came up at the zoning board as well. This is a facility that requires licensure through the state, so they're going to be looking at issues of security as well as they give Mr. Zheng the license to do this facility there.
Yeah, that's part of the requirement for the, from the state. That is for sure. Every single door is, you know, set up with an alarm. You know, once they, you know, open the door, you know, alarm will go off. So all the employee will be there, you know, immediately. Actually, like, the employee will be monitoring every single, like, you know, entrance or exit all day long, that's for sure, yeah.
Thank you. That was a very good question.
Okay, so the motion is to close the public hearing for 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare, major site plan approval, change of use.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes?
Next motion is to approve the waivers as requested by the applicant and agreed upon with the town planner for 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare, major site plan.
Second.
And should we just mention that the waivers are mainly for the outside of the building and there are no changes to the outside of the building? This is just an interior change, which is why I think that the waivers requested should be approved.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes?
And I'll make the motion, the planning board approve major site plan, change of use for 337 Turnpike Road Adult Daycare.
With, just to add, with...
With the conditions and...
With the Board of Health and the revisions.
Revisions and the Board of Health approval.
Yeah.
As conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brascio, yes?
Thank you very much. Welcome to Southborough.
Matt, we'll be in touch, if you reach out to me, we can define exactly what you need to submit, and then we'll get the planning board to endorse it soon as we have full plans.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. That's the way it should go, so this is just an exemplary meeting, just because you came prepared, you were diligent, and you're just so communicative, so thank you.
I was just gonna say that. One meeting for major site plan, one meeting for special permit, so that's... Congratulations to you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing, MBTA Communities Overlay District and Zoning Amendment. Karina?
So I just asked that, and when people come up to the microphone, that they speak nice and loudly. Because our recording clerk has to hear everything you're saying, too, on the video when it comes through. So.
And introduce yourself and give your address.
Yeah. All right. So this is the legal notice for, public hearing notice, July 2nd, 2024, for MBTA Communities, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, Adoption of Multifamily Zoning by Right Bylaw per Section MGL 40A, Section 5. The Planning Board of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, July 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the McAuliffe Hearing Room, 17 Carmen Street, Southborough, Mass., and via Zoom to consider the adoption of a new bylaw required under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A, dash MBTA Communities, to create overlay districts for multifamily housing by right. These hearings concern a proposed zoning change to create overlay districts that will allow multifamily housing by right. A copy of the proposal may be viewed on the town's website at www.southboroughma.gov/AgendaCenter/Planning-Board-29 or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom remote participation by going online to www.southboroughma.gov/674/virtual-meetings. Mimi Latrell, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. And then a brief update on how we got here. If you'd like. Well, it's in the Dropbox, right under the main heading. So while Colleen's loading that, I just want to say that on July 2nd, we provided maps and draft bylaw to the Select Board for the proper process that's required for the Select Board then to recommend it to the Planning Board for a public hearing for zoning amendment as required. The legal ad was posted with the town clerk on July 2nd and posted in the newspaper on both July 8th and July 15th as required, with the Planning Board opening this evening. The legal ad was sent to towns and agencies. Let me see here. And the maps and the draft bylaw was distributed to town departments for their review. We've not received any comments back from town departments. On July 10th, at their Select Board meeting, the Select Board discussed the zoning amendment. And I was notified by the town administrator that they had done that, which satisfies some of the forms we have to fill out for the Attorney General's Office. On July 15th, we received some information from resident Margaret Landry about comments on the bylaw. Some of those comments were discussed and addressed with her directly, as they were things we had discussed previously at other meetings. On July 16th, we received a comment letter packet from resident Bob Heavy pertaining to his Oh, he's not a resident. I'm sorry. The owner of 80, 84, and 88 Turnpike Road, which was distributed to various departments by him and also to the Planning Board members by us once we got our copy. And then let's see here. Little bit of a backtrack. So if you recall, back in June 3rd, we had a mapping session number three, which pertained to the half a mile radius. As the model had not been compliant, the compliance model didn't work. So out of that meeting on June 17th, the Planning Board had, at their regular meeting, discussed the new station area. Then on June 25th, Chris Klutchman with EO HLC confirmed that the town would be allowed to shift the half mile radius at the train station to the east slightly, still maintaining the center on the MBTA property right on the edge. They also approved that we could consider the lots that were on the eastern end of Southville Road on the extent of the radius. Then, though, that information then was provided to Bowler Engineering so that they could run the compliance model to confirm that these new areas within the station, half a mile, within the half mile of the station would work. They did that and we got some feedback that there was some concern with the three parcels, one of the three parcels that were up in the Blenden overlay area. There was a parcel that had some excluded land on it, which didn't allow us to quite meet the unit capacity for the half mile station. So we needed to have 150 units total within the half mile, and you have to have 15 units per acre. So it was a little shy of that. So the Chair and I and Colleen had a Zoom meeting with Bowler Engineering to review, to see what was actually happening there and where the issues were. There was a line in the model that referenced open space, which we were able to say yes to instead of no. And that, in addition to increasing the density at the Madison Place area, which is actually district, overlay District 2, which is outside the half mile. If we changed that from 15 units, very good, to 16, then the model, everything worked with the areas that have been selected. And so they ran that model using that scenario and that was good. Everything worked. The working compliance model was received from Bowler on July 16th. Then they provided us with updated visual maps that showed all the areas in the Town of Southborough that were now proposed for overlay district. And that brings us to this evening. We also have the draft bylaw that was prepared prior to the prior town meeting in February 2020, in March of 2024.
March?
Yeah. And it required some tweaking, not very much, because it was relatively generic. And we have a draft copy of that. All this information was provided in the meeting packet that you can find next to the agenda on the town website, where you find the posted agendas. So if anyone needs to see anything more, you can see it there as well, if there's anything unclear. All right, sorry. One last sentence.
Very good. Very thorough. Take it away, Colleen.
So a lot of you have already seen a lot of this presentation, so we'll just run right through. So this is to amend for special town meeting in the fall. That's September 30th. And the first will be the second night if you need it. So this is given to you by the Planning Board, Mimi, Jesse Stein, Marnie Houlihan, Debbie Demiria, and Lisa Bracio. And this is the, what is the MBTA Communities Act. And this was its zoning act in 19, I'm sorry, 19, wow, I'm dating myself. 2020, the zoning act was amended by Massachusetts Legislature to promote the production of multifamily housing within walking distance of public transportation to address the severe regional housing shortage. The new law, MGL, Chapter 40A, subsection 3A, A1, an MBTA community shall have an ordinance, a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right. The key components of the MBTA bylaw is we need 50 total acres to have the multifamily by right. 10 of the acres must be within a half a mile of the MBTA station. Walking distance to public transportation, bikeways, and bus stops. Suitable for families with children. No bedroom or age restrictions. Zoning must allow a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. And zoning permit process cannot be discretionary.
Which means you can't require a special permit?
So this is what it means to Southborough. The 50 acres need to be 10 acres, as we said, in the half mile of the MBTA station. 25 acres, that's 50% of what's required, has to be contiguous. And 15 more acres to make the full 50, and those can be five acre districts. We have a total minimum unit capacity of 750 units. And under site plan review, it's a regular major site plan application, public hearing with a butter notification. Heights, setbacks, parking, lighting, lower impact development, that's all part of the site plan review. Just 10% of the required to be inclusionary dwellings for our subsidized housing inventory. 90% of the units will be market rate. So just as a little historical, Planning Board did a lot of outreach. And we started, MBTA Communities was an agenda item that was discussed at over 45 Planning Board meetings. We secured some technical assistance grants, two actually, for community engagement and mapping. We mailed residents invitations to attend the scheduled informational forums, mapping sessions for all the new requirements. We had our guest speaker, Lily Link, who was the MBTA Communities Engagement Manager, who presented at two of our informational forums. That was late, I'm sorry, late fall and early, no, late fall, that's when she was there. Planning Board hosted three mapping sessions to elicit residents' area preferences, late fall 2023 and late spring in 2024. We applied to MHP for direct technical assistance and Bowler Engineering was assigned to us from their pre-qualified consultants. Bowler was tasked with creating maps of our districts and running them through the state's compliance model. And this is the state's compliance model. We have 800, I'm going to blow this up a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I can read that better. So let me get over here. So this area here is what I'm going to be reading. And this is the final. There's a lot of spreadsheets that all accumulate and end up there. So the community is Southborough. Our community category is a commuter rail community. We have, the 2020 census shows that we have 3,763 family units. Minimum family unit capacity is 750. The minimum land area, again, is 50. Developable station area is 167.08 acres. And the unit capacity within the transit station is required to be 20%. Land located, I'm sorry, within the transit station areas, located in the transit areas. And then there's a, the, I think, wasn't that supposed to be a point? Anyway, so the next, the modeled results is what we were looking for. And these numbers did not work out for us first. So
So just to clarify, before you go in, this first column here is what the state required us to do. And the model is showing, these are the results with the areas that have been selected. This is, this is the outcome.
And just to clarify, the state is requiring zoning. They're not requiring anything be built. They're just requiring zoning.
So as the numbers came out, we have complied. The minimum unit capacity comes out to be 828 units. The minimum land area that was required to be 50 is 59.2. The developable station area, that's the same. And then the unit capacity within the transit station is at 105%. And the rest of the town is at 129.
So what that 105% represents is that you're meeting 100% of the 20%.
Yeah.
And then that 5% is what's beyond the 20%. It's very strange. And this is what was misinterpreted originally back in the wintertime. So it's kind of elusive. And the same with the bottom number here. So you're required to have 20%, but we're showing 100% of that 20% plus 29% of that 20%.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? This is my point. Like, this is where it just doesn't, it does not compute from like what you would expect to see. And this is where I think the state model challenges most people.
Yeah.
This is where we are meeting 157 of the 150 required in the commuter rail station. So like in my mind, this would, apples to apples would say something like 22.3%. It would not say 105%. That's why it just does not compute.
And I think that's why
Which worries me about Bowler interpreting this again. So that's where I just want to make sure that we're all aligned with the information that's contained in this.
So when we didn't meet it before, it was 33%. And they thought they met it because it was more than 20. So it's been confirmed that they're looking for 100% in both of those. And it's 100% of the 20, which is a very awkward way to report that.
Right. Because I would just say that does not qualify this.
Right, right.
Right?
So it's just, maybe that's government inaction. That's all I'll say.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we almost need like a slide to explain that.
We can certainly do that.
And also, if you look deeper into the model, as you get more familiar with it, you can see that the numbers make that happen. It's just this way it's presented is a little strange. It's not intuitive.
So these are the districts that we came up with. This is the full town map. The way we're looking at them is, one is down here. So this, both being in the station area, we called it District 1A and District 1B. 1A being the blue. 1B being the, the pink. And then we have the Madison Place area up here in green. That's our 25 acres that has to be contingent, contiguous. Can't say that today. And then the last area is right up here in the corner, blue. And I believe that's the tech school or
St. Martin's.
St. Martin Street. And then we have some closer zoomed in maps. These are the two in the half mile radius, District 1A and District 2B. See if I can, I want to move this.
1A and 1B.
Did I say 2B? No, okay, sorry. 1A.
Colleen, is there any way to minimize your screen, just so we can project the
Yeah, I don't know.
The thing on the right, the little box that's showing you your Zoom?
Oh, yeah.
The little, the left.
I hit mine.
Is it in your screen?
Should I stop here and start over?
It's just strange that it doesn't.
It is weird.
Sorry, I don't mean to be a pain. It's just hard to see the slides. It's covered.
It comes up when you share the screen.
Yeah, that's very strange.
I don't, I don't have it on my screen.
Yeah, it's not on
Oh, that's good. Put it down below. Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's what I was reading. So, so this is District 1A, which is on, many of the tables had asked to do the, move the circle east. And this was number one choice at several tables at the last mapping session.
Could you leave the road inside South Village? It's pretty possible to see what that is.
Liberty? Yeah, that's what it says to me. Is that right? Okay. And this is District 1B, and it's 6.1 acres. Oops, sorry. Those are the addresses that are there. And this big lot here was the one that was causing us trouble because it had a lot of excluded land. So that's where the yes came in. So that's 1B. And then this is Madison Place, which is District 2. It's 29.5 acres. These are the addresses that are included.
And that hasn't changed from the original?
Yeah, these last two were from the original mapping sessions. And this is District 3, 14.6 acres, St. Martin Street. And this is District 3, 14.6 acres, St. Martin Street. Now we're ready for questions.
Mr. Stein.
Well, we've got a, we've got a situation where the state has, you know, put this on us, so to speak. I don't think that these are zoning changes that we would have initiated, to say the least. Having said that, I feel that, just based on my experience on the Planning Board, it's usually better to control what we can control. And that involves, you know, some form of compromise. Because if we, if we don't pass this, then we do face, in my opinion, the possibility of a developer litigating to do something that is far beyond the scope of what, you know, of what we can't control in terms of density, height, setbacks, et cetera. So we've gone to, I feel like, you know, fairly great lengths to make this as fair and equitable as possible within the guidelines of the legislation. And look forward to hearing from everybody here and from the public in general on, you know, what they feel like we should be doing differently. Thanks.
Ms. Wuhan.
So first, thank you, Colleen, Mimi, Karina, for all the work to be able to do behind the scenes who were prepared for tonight. So really appreciate that with the compliance model. To the town residents, thank you again for coming out. I think we've tried to put forward a process that, where we could collaborate and work in a way that could, can come to some resolution. As Jesse said, we are working within a dictator mandate from the state around the MBTA. As I think unfortunately, the half-mile district within the train station is taking quite a brunt because of the requirement, but we really can't change that. So through the process of the mapping sessions way back when, and then just recently in early June, the Planning Board came to the belief that what we're proposing for Districts 1A and 1B will meet the needs, but we're looking forward to hearing the feedback from those in the room. So thank you for coming, as well as those on Zoom. But I think we're in a good place. Hopefully, there isn't too much debate around District 2 and 3. But I suspect we will be hearing about District 1 and A and B. So thank you.
Ms. Maria.
I just want to say thank you also to everybody who's come. I would say that this is the beginning of an open public hearing. So this is your chance to, to speak. For those of you who came at the beginning, and we had a couple of members of the Select Board discussing the possibility of grants. Ms. Wuhan had made it very clear, if this doesn't pass, then the town is not in a position to receive any further grants from the state. So it's also just very important, because this is our community, that we want to make sure that we can control what we can and do the best that we can. So it's not perfect, and I know that there's some folks in the room who aren't happy. So this is the time to come forward. If you have a different idea about how you think what might be better, you know, please come up to the microphone and let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Barshiel.
Thank you. Again, thank you for everyone that continues to come to these meetings. I think it's really important for your voice to be heard, and this is really the venue for that to take place. I just wanted to share with the board a couple of conversations that I've had since our last meeting with some of the residents along the Southville Road. There was some concern relayed to me regarding the postcards that went out and where we ended up falling on the east side. Some of the residents that are, were outside of the original circle, but now the proposed 1B is potentially across from their house, have concerns that they weren't notified that this could take place, and they feel they didn't have their voice heard. So again, I'm just sharing the conversations that I've had because I think it's important for the board to know as we move forward. So there was also the same concern that we've heard prior as well that these two sites are something that could be built tomorrow. And we've talked, the Planning Board has talked through the process about trying to stagger how things could potentially be done, so the impact on services. So there is some concern still on these sites. I mean, I'm not, I'm not suggesting an answer. I'm just sharing with you the concerns that were shared with me. I know that who I spoke to wasn't able to come tonight, so. And I know this is a hearing process, and they will have another opportunity to speak. But I just wanted the board to be aware that these are some of the conversations taking place. And they're taking place within some of the neighborhoods that were outside of the original circle as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we weren't, so when we, we weren't aware that the state was going to allow us to shift it. It was just an idea we had proposed to the state. And it wasn't until after those lots were chosen by most of the tables at our last mapping session that we knew we would be able to utilize those. And the, the postcards weren't the only notification. It would, you know, it was on the town website, and it was on the blog, and the agendas were posted. And this has been going on for, going on two years now. And I would like to thank the, the board for all the hard work on this and all the residents because the residents is what helped us arrive at, at these overlays. The board did not pick them, or like a lot of towns, they just had their planning staff pick them. That didn't happen here. It all came from the residents. And we took all the residents' input. In the, in the half-mile, we were asked to avoid historic properties. We did that. We were asked to keep the underlying zoning. We did that, and it made it very complicated because many of the lots down there are non-zoning compliant. So it, it limited our ability to pick other lots. We were asked that not, not the entire 10 acres for the station area be on Southville Road, that it be split into different roads. We did that. And these overlays were all chosen based on the input we got at, at the mapping sessions. So thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Wuhan.
Yeah, sorry, just one more. I know that part of our appeal to the state was also, can we extend this till December of 2026? Have we heard anything back? Are they willing to, to make any concessions on that?
No, they know who's working with them.
Yeah.
We are one of them.
Okay.
Right, there was no specific.
They, they know who's working with the state. There's a lot of people that aren't working with the state, and we've been in direct communication. So they, they know our situation, and they know that we, you know, pulled it at the last town meeting. So yes, they.
They're working with us but said, no, sorry, we're not willing to extend the deadline.
They have not said that they would extend it, but they have said that they will be flexible. So we will see what happens.
Got it, thanks.
So hopefully, they won't immediately file a lawsuit against us if we don't comply.
And the other concession we asked for was a willingness to come down in the station area. Was there any feedback from them on that specific point?
No.
No, no, nothing specific. Nothing beyond actually allowing us to move the half-mile radius to the east while maintaining the center still on the property of the MBTA station. And allowing us to use a lot outside of the radius.
Because they were under the same ownership.
That was contiguous under, same owner for the lot that was in, was partially within the radius. Because they know we're struggling with the historic properties and the wetlands and only having a half of a circle.
Yep.
As opposed to a whole circle.
Half of the 160.
Thank you.
Mimi, can I?
Yes.
Those are great points, Marnie, and I was gonna go there myself later. I mean, I think we should be doing two things parallel. I think we should be moving forward as we're doing, but I think we should be following up with the state. And, and we should be pretty, what's the word? Verbal, yeah. You know, and, and not just letting them make an excuse or not say anything. Make, make them give us a decision. I think we should continue to follow up and kind of be in their face about it because this does have a huge impact, especially on the south side of town. So I would just recommend that.
So we have met with them.
Twice?
They, so the Director of Housing and Living Communities, who's running this program, we've met with her twice on two, two Zoom calls. So we have followed up. She has been willing to be flexible, but they're not, they're not going to say, we don't need to comply. That's just not going to happen. But we'll have to, you know, we've, we've been working trying to comply, and that's, that's the, you know, the law.
And Mimi, I wasn't trying to imply that, that people weren't, you know, you guys weren't working very hard on this. But I think if they're gonna say no, I think they should put it in writing. And I think that the, the residents in town deserve that, you know, based on what's happened. So, and again, they probably won't do that, but I certainly would be looking for something like that based on what they're requiring us to do.
One more comment is, it might not hurt if residents wrote the state directly suggesting that it makes sense to reduce the quantity from 10 acres to something a little bit more reasonable because it's an egregious amount for that area. We certainly are trying to do our best, but it always helps to have, you know, voting public write their comments, and we can certainly provide that address.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road. And I'm not a direct abutter, but I'm close enough to the lots in the industrial zone on Southville Road. And first, I'd like to say, throughout this process, I believe the Planning Board acted in good faith, worked really hard to engage the public, keep us informed. But I think you dropped the ball on this moving it east. And I'll say, when I hear that the mapping session, everyone wanted it moved to the east, I'll tell you what I heard. Get it out of my neighborhood. Nobody wants, did you consider what these two new lots are going to do to not just the half-mile, but the people across the street? Who, I've talked to a few, they have no idea. What you're planning to do is allow 90 units on those six acres. Zoning by right, 15 units an acre, six acres, 90 units. You can shake your head, but how my, how's my math wrong?
Because the compliance only comes out at 77, not 90.
77 or 90, really? But the other point is, you don't know, they're allowed, you told us that you're doing the zoning. The compliance model doesn't limit it, does it? No, they're allowed 90 units by right. And if they don't get the 90 units, you don't know what size condos they're gonna put in or apartments. They could make them smaller so they could fit more in. Or you cannot deny them the right to go to the ZBA to get zoning relief and to get taller buildings, reduce setbacks, whatever it takes to fit the 90 in. And you have no control over what the ZBA will allow or not allow. But 77 or 90 units, it's still an awful lot of traffic and impact to the neighborhood. And I'm going to say that in the early discussions, this Planning Board voiced at meetings, great care and concern to not choose buildable lots. And what I think that, what disturbed me the most was to not only include them, but to go out of your way to get the state to say, yeah, let's do it. And you never looked at the impact. I never heard a discussion on the environmental impact. You're right up against the only biomapped area to the traffic, to the light. And I'm sorry, but when you look at the new map, most of the abutters aren't even in the new half-mile zone that goes a little bit further to the east. And they weren't even included in the notification, and I understand you weren't required. But what happened at that Planning Board mapping session was no different than having a mapping session where people from the south side of town choosing what goes on the north side of town. Put it on presidential, let's put it there. It's no different because the people who live adjacent to those lots were not at that meeting. And you can't blame them for not being there. Because people go to what they think they have a vested interest, and none of them had a clue those lots were going to be included. And you know what? Maybe include them, and the conversation will be, you know what? We'd prefer apartment buildings because it's an industrial lot, and maybe it will be a better use for us. But let them be part of that conversation before you choose the lot. And don't deny that there's negative impact to all of the road. I compared the car trips for a traffic study at a 40B with 60 units and came out with a minimum of 450 car trips. And I think that's 450 one-way and 450 back. And so it's going to be split. They won't all be going in the same direction. A trip is in and out, right? Because I know, I don't drive in and out of my house that often. But, you know, two trips a day, that's driving down Southville Road four times. And my husband doing two trips a day, that's four times, right? So that's eight trips on Southville Road for two people only leaving the house twice. What if you have kids? You go to work, you come home, you go to a meeting. I'm just saying, you're not going to have a traffic study after this goes through, right? It's by right. You're not going to have an environmental, and I just saw in the bylaw, you're reducing the, the requirements for some of the environmental protection. That's another topic for another day. But I also have a, one underlying zoning question. You said underlying zoning would stay in place, which I believe is as good as until they go to the ZBA. But in the industrial zoning, and this says industrial park, but I don't think we're in an industrial park. But you say three stories, but industrial zoning, it reverts to the residential zoning. So isn't that two and a half stories? How did that get changed? So that's not.
So, so to be clear, industrial zoning, residential units within an industrial zone revert to RESB. Residential units within industrial park do not. That keeps the underlying zoning.
I'll double check because I didn't know that was an industrial park on Southville Road.
It's not, it's industrial. So it'd be 1A and 1B, which is RESB, is the underlying zoning.
I'm just saying, it says three stories on your chart here.
For which district?
MCOD, Sub District 2.
So, so south, all of the train station area are 1A and 1B.
Okay, so then excuse my angst there. So still, I go back to the, the choice of those lots, knowing that the owner is ready to build in residential. And you took great care not to include ready-to-build, immediate lots. You had other maps at the mapping session that would hopefully fulfill this because people mapped it out. I just think, you know, without going over, all, that's an awful lot of cars every day. And don't think they're not going to end up on Woodbury. Don't think they're not going to end up on Atwood. Because you, we already, you know, we're already suffering from the highest incidence of pollutants from the trains that impact respiratory illnesses. All that traffic backing up at the T station, it's already at the lights. You're just going to have a bigger wait time to get through there, more pollution from air pollution, more light pollution, following the lighting bylaw. You're still going to have a glow impacting the, the biomap habitat. I know there's other people that want to say stuff. I just think you need to reach out to those neighbors and let them know that you're planning 90 units across the street from them. And you're saying you're not planning, you're not building, but you already know the developer wants to put housing there. You already know that one of the four acres is vacant and ready to go. You know that it's 15 units an acre. The compliance model, that's what the state credits us with. It doesn't limit the developer from what he can put there. And I, I'll say this again, 77 units or 90? I mean, really? And do you want them on your street? You know, that many car trips a day? I don't know. I have trouble getting out of my driveway now. Maybe it will slow, and then the other thing is, this is supposed to be walkable? How are those people supposed to get across the street? There's no sidewalk on that side of the road, and you can't build one because the T tried. You've got too many wetland crossings. You know, maybe, I think we have trouble with cars going too fast. I almost get rear-ended every time I pull out of my driveway. Cars right on my butt. I look, there's no one coming, there's someone doing 50, and then they're honking their horn because I'm not doing 50 out of the driveway. Maybe it will slow down traffic when people start getting picked off trying to cross the street to get to the train station, you know? But it's not a safe location. And I think more concern should have been given to what this specific lot will impact all of. And I think more concern should have been given to what this specific lot will impact all of the neighborhood. And I think everyone choosing go to the east was not a looking at that lot and what it means to them when they actually build it out and what the traffic will be like for everyone. I think it was get it out of my neighborhood. And you had people who don't live near there saying, "Put it to the east."
I just want to make one quick comment. So I know you mentioned, so Freddie, thank you for your, your comments. I know you mentioned that it's kind of out of control and what they'll build, they'll build. I want to just reinforce that MBTA is a zoning. We still have a site plan review. Site plan requires a public hearing with a butter notification. We determine height setbacks, parking, lighting, lower impact development. And so we do have all of those controls when a developer does come to us. It's not completely out of our control. This is zoning that we are providing an opportunity for the town to vote. The public hearing is this process to be able to say, is, are these lots the ones that will move forward? But I don't want anybody leaving the room saying, if this law passes, that automatically people will build. They will, they will have to come through the process. And the process allows the planning board to be able to establish that we maintain what we have always done in this town. And I think we've done, we have a very strong reputation for doing the right thing. So I just want to reinforce that. Thank you, Mimi.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Paul Desmond, 5 Pine Collin Lane. I may have some more detailed comments later, but right now, just to sort of level the playing field, I think some people here are more informed than others. Could you go into a little more detail on especially 1A and 1B? In terms of what's there now, why you chose those and things like that? I just would like to educate myself on what the thinking was behind choosing those particular parcels. Thank you.
What was your name? Andrew Desmond.
Paul Desmond, sorry.
Is 1A Blendon or Southville?
1B is Blendon.
Okay. So 1A has an industrial building on one of the parcels and a vacant lot that all the trees were removed on, on the second lot. And just, so that's an industrial parcel that an industrial building at 45 feet, three stories, can go in at any time, as opposed to 35 feet and two and a half stories for a residential. And also the maximum floor area ratio is 0.6 in an industrial and 0.3. So it's much smaller building as compared to the size of the lot for a residential. And that was chosen from the, our mapping session on June 3rd. And out of the nine tables, four picked those two lots. The next, the next 1B, which is two lots on Woodland and one on Blendon, they're, all have houses on them. And they were chosen again because four out of the nine tables picked those. And they met the criteria of, first, they were compliant lots, which is, was difficult to find in that area. So we could keep the underlying zoning. It allowed us to have two parcels, so not all of the 10 acres were on Southville. It avoided any historic properties, so as not to encourage the demolition of historic properties. So I think that, anything else?
Yeah, and I was, I was just going to say, on our website, we've put like a 101 just to kind of go back to the beginning. But just for context, Mr. Desmond, it's nice to see you tonight, thanks for coming. The planning board was prepared to go to town meeting with three districts proposed in March. And the town, the state's model was inaccurate, and so we pulled that. So we, as a planning board, decided that it would be best, because the most troublesome area is this half-mile within the commuter rail area. And in an ideal world, people from the state would come out and visit and say, they realize that 50 acre, 10 acres doesn't fit in this area. But we're trying to work the best that we can. So we put it back out to the residents and we sent mailers to the half-mile radius to restart the process while in parallel, talking to the state to try to see if we could mitigate some of these challenges. Part of the mitigation was a request to move the half-mile circle from the center to the east. And we received that feedback after the planning board held the planning sessions and mailed the postcards. And so we were able to shift the half-mile to east, which allowed us to include those two areas in the industrial zone and that 1A area. So from a context perspective, that's what happened. We had quite a bit of turnout, I would say, I don't even know, 75 to 85 people that turned out on June 3rd for mapping sessions. We had nine active tables. At those active tables, people worked together. Whether, I'm sure people who knew each other sat together. We didn't have assigned seating. And then the residents discussed where they would like to kind of put places. Those maps can all be found on our website. And so in our last planning board meeting, we looked at all of the different table recommendations. And the overwhelming feeling from the people who presented or came to the mapping session, as Mimi stated, was they didn't want it all to be on Southville Road. That to be able to kind of make sure, everyone felt a little bit of the pain, I guess, is the best way to put that. And that's where the planning board decided that a little bit on Southville and a little bit in the residential area was the best compromise based on the feedback of the maps. And that's what was presented tonight in 1A and 1B.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Cage, 6 Parker Street. I was wondering if you could pull up that map, the half-mile map from the planning session? The one that had the yellow and housing lots?
Oh, yeah. Do you have the one with all the non-compliant lots?
The one you had just before this. You probably have it open.
Like this map that was, but without the, this has all, with the chosen, but without the-
I think it was the last meeting.
17, June 17. No, no, no. You already had it open, I think, on your, you had it in the shared screen area. What is the Zoom shared screen? Sorry. Bear with us for a second, there's a lot of files here. Just shared screen. I just hit it accidentally, sorry. I think that might be it. Is that it? No, that's the, no.
This is the zoning one, but I can turn on all those layers. Hit the other. You can just pull up the zoning map and hit the excluded. Because it actually does have this excluded layer now.
Takes a second to drag over. You can close this side too. Is this what you're talking about? And if you zoom into the half-mile?
Yeah, this, this looks like it's the one, yes. So I, you know, I wanted to thank the board. This has been almost two years of discussion, emotions, frustration. I was involved in a lot of this and come to a lot of these meetings and witnessing some of the state rep who came in and talked about how this would save us all money on trash pickup, which we don't have, and septic systems, which we, I mean sewer, which we don't have. And so obviously the state, they, they don't live in Southborough. And they're not residents of Southborough and they have no idea what we're dealing with here. But one of the things that has been very complicated and initiated, initiated a lot of the confusion back in March of this year was the non-conforming lots in that half-mile. It really does constrain where we can become compliant. As you look at the map here, all these lots, these homes that are, we live here. And they're highlighted in yellow. And while we could pick those lots and say we could use this as multifamily, it wouldn't have given us the numbers the state wanted, which is the occupancy. It's just giving the state land. So part of that discussion, and this is during the planning board meeting that we had in March, but also the, the meeting that we had here, I believe, last month or the month before, when we, when the board was here and residents were here picking the land, was why are we picking this industrial zone? Or why are we picking the 1B and the 1A lots? Was looking at how much of an impact we're giving and how much land we're giving. Because we could definitely take a whole swath of, that whole section of land from Fitz's all the way to the train station, no, sorry, the, the first bridge, giving the town, the state 11 acres of land. And all we would be getting them is five acres, meeting our five-acre requirement and our 150-unit requirement. But we'd be doubling the amount of land we give to the town. And as the resident had mentioned, sorry, doubling the amount of land for multifamily. And as you mentioned earlier, the resident mentioned earlier, if we open up more land, we're going to see more building. So it's not something that we're all happy with. I don't think any of us are really going to be very happy with no matter which direction we go with. And of course, you know, tonight is not the last say. There will be a special meeting in September, October timeframe. And where all of the town can vote on this decision. But, you know, it has been a difficult road so far in the last year and a half trying to find this, getting a plan, finding out the plan is flawed because of lack of proper information from our, our expert. And, and just wanted to make sure, you know, this is a compromise. And while, you know, it's not next to my house, it's certainly very close to it. And, you know, I will be dealing with the traffic and the noise and everything else, like all the residents are going to be in that area. Because it's a half-mile near the train station. It's already very dense there. It's already very noisy there. There's already a lot of truck traffic there. And, but there's really no perfect place for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is James Nichols Worley. I live at 94 Main Street. I'm not a direct abutter, but I wish I was. I want to just take a broad picture on all these zoning districts for, for just a minute or two to explain why I'm, I'm supportive of them and to thank you, the planning board, and my neighbors. One of my favorite places to be is here at Town Hall, hearing what people have to say. I've been thinking a lot recently about what makes Southborough great. I got to go to the best public schools in Massachusetts. We have some of the happiest and healthiest people in America. And I'd be willing to wager that we have the friendliest and most welcoming neighbors probably on earth. This town is so great that just a year after Massachusetts became the first state to legalize gay marriage, my two fathers were able to move here to Southborough with their three children. I'd like to add that my dads don't necessarily support all my opinions.
Of course.
At its core, I think these proposed zoning changes will have a positive impact on our town and on our state. We know that people want to live in Southborough. Our senior citizens and longtime residents want to stay here. Families of all kinds want to raise their children here. And admittedly, young people like me want the ability to move here one day. We know that a lot of people want to be our neighbors because they share our values and that they're good people like we are. Southborough has grown in population every decade for 100 years. Our town's population even doubled between 1950 and 1970. This is nowhere close to that. I don't think Southborough's population will ever double again. But our town is undoubtedly better because of it, because of the 10,000 or so people who live in this town. Call me old-fashioned for my generation, but I believe in the American dream. And I think that's what Southborough has been. From our soldiers who were in the American Revolution, in the Civil War, to the Burnett family who made Southborough and Deerfoot Farms one of the largest dairy producers in America. I think that spirit of improvement has gone on for entire town history. And I think we can continue that. In that spirit, I'd say that we can do this. That this might not be perfect. Change is never easy. But I trust the people who live in this town. I trust my neighbors. I trust the people who build our homes. I trust that nobody wants to make traffic worse. We want people to be able to use this great commuter rail, to use the Metro West Regional Transit Authority buses, to walk on our great sidewalks and experience our great trails. I know that nobody wants to make things difficult for our school system. We want to make sure that we can support our high-quality schools with a projected decline in our student age population. And I know especially that our neighbors want to make this town better. I have no doubt in my mind that there's not a single person in this room who wants to make this town worse. I don't think there's a single person out of 10,000 people who don't believe in Southborough. I think we can do this. That's why I support these rezonings, all, all four of these districts. Why I support and applaud the work of the planning board, especially, you know, with how challenging this has been coming top-down from the state. And that's why I think not only a majority of voters support MBTA communities, and so far, I think 60 or so towns had open town meeting, but I think we can too. So thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Waddell. I live at, we live at 21 Darlene Drive. We've been in town for close to 30 years or so. And I appreciate the, the passion here. I also appreciate what the board has done and what a difficult decision that is. So I have a few observations and then a couple of questions. So the observations start with how we chose the zones that we chose. And many of the points that were made that, I, I happen to be at the meeting, I walked around to the tables, okay? And I didn't see the extension to the east on any of the maps. I certainly couldn't overhear every conversation, okay? But, you know, but this was not chosen by the people in town. We should also note that what was not chosen by the people in town is, can we say no? Some other towns have said no, okay? We were kind of told, here's the options, and they're very restricted. So again, first observation is, nobody voted on the extension to the east. Second observation is that what, how did we designate what was this historical district, okay? Part of what is designated as historical district had Eponema's there and an insurance company now, right? I don't know any, I've lived here for 30 years and I don't know what has designated that as historic. Another one of the residents noted that the, there's a bunch of non-qualifying lots. If you take out the non-qualifying lots, okay? And you take out the town-owned land, like the community center, and you take out the historic district, there was virtually nothing left to choose. Which gets, Marty, to your point, that this is crazy, okay? So I'm going to end with my two questions. First, what would it take for the board to say, "No, this doesn't make any sense"? That's my first question. And to sort of help think about that, okay? How many residents are within half a mile of the train station today? Maybe there's 500, 800, somewhere in that kind of range, okay? This would put another 500. This would put another 1,500 residents in that area, something like that, okay? You guys probably know the numbers better than I do. So, I'll repeat the first question, right? What would it take for this board to say, no, this doesn't make any sense? You have transformed the way that people are living here in a way that they would not have chosen when they bought their homes. So, that's my first question.
So, this is a law from the state, so to say no would open us up to lawsuits. And we know that there are many developers who have come forward and said, pick me, pick me. So, my fear is that the first thing that would happen is that it would be, a developer would pick their very large parcel and want all those units on it, and they would go to court and win because it's a law and we were required, and we lose all grant funding from the state.
So, Milton has said no, first of all, so there is a precedent there, and I, my understanding is-
And they're in court right now.
And they're in court right now. And my understanding is we get a very small amount of money from state grants over the past 10 years.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, there will be a vote at the special town meeting. That is the point at which you would vote no. And if that is how the town votes, then we're saying no at that point. The role of this board is actually not to, you know, vote on the legislation.
The purpose of the question wasn't to actually force a vote here. The purpose of the question was to make the point, right? That, that if you're, would you vote? What would force you to vote no? What would be, what would rise above the threshold for you to say no? And then the second question is, what would rise above the threshold to say no if you were living in that zone or adjacent to that zone? That's the thought that I want to have in your head as we go forward, because this impacts the people in this room, who are obviously here for a reason, right? In a way that we all know, right, is, is very substantial. That's what the purpose of the question is. I know tonight's not the vote night.
Just to ask, you said an additional 1,500 residents?
Again, I don't know what the numbers are. You know what the numbers are better than I do. But if you add as many units as are required, okay, and you compare that to the number of residents within a half-mile today, I suspect that you will more than double the population of that half-mile radius.
So, we're required to do 150 units in that area?
Mm-hmm. And how many residents per unit? We don't know yet, I understand. But projected, what does that look like? It's all part of, it's all part of imagining in your minds, if you're living there, right? You guys are representing the town. If you're living there, what does that feel like? It feels like, you know, the small little village of Corderville, okay? And a piece of this has just doubled in size, not in 20 years, as someone has suggested, but in a year or two. And completely changed the character and nature of that area of town. Just wanted to, again, I wasn't expecting answers to the questions. My whole purpose was to get you thinking about it from the point of view of the residents in that area. Thank you.
And I just want to, because this is what I do, I'd love to just make a statement of clarification. So, for the mapping sessions, you did not hear, I think Mr. Stein stood up and said, for the purpose of tonight and the mapping sessions, it's really to map what is possible. We know the answer at town meeting can be a no. I mean, we can't, we're not going to dictate that. That's what the freedom of democracy is. And we are just trying to put the best options forward. But again, we, the night of the planning of the meeting, the planning board members will vote, and that's how it will go down. But I think we feel obligated for state law to find the best compromise and put that forward to the town, knowing that people have come and spoken their minds, and we've done the best that we can to represent that, and then allow the town to vote, and then we'll see what happens. Appreciate your comments.
Hi, I'm Andi Shamps. I live at 272 Corderville Road. Talking about voting and our little neck of the woods, that little area, we're outnumbered. The rest of the town, we're not talking about putting multifamily houses in, on Sears Road, you know, on Lattice Gwama. They, it doesn't affect them, and they're going to vote yes. So, we're really outnumbered. We, I mean, unless we try to get people to see our side of it, I mean, how many people actually come down Corderville Road from this side of town? I don't know. I don't know. I have a couple of questions. Is there going to be any kind of traffic study before any kind of construction starts? Or any studies for the impact of the schools? Are we doing any, anything? I can't get out of my houses, out of my driveway in the morning now. This is where my concern is. And, I mean, everyone's going to be coming down and going down Corderville Road, and I just want to know if there's going to be a traffic study before these, just an impact
A traffic study is not, not required. But MAPC did do a study on the effect of school populations from multifamily housing, and it's far less than single-family homes. I know that Madison Place, which is 168 units, has like 10 kids in it, whereas Deerfoot Extension, which is, I think, like 10 lots, has like 15 kids in the school. So, multifamily housing has far less of an impact on school-age population than single-family homes.
Are we going to have a say on whether this is multi-use or not?
Multi-use?
Multi-use zoning.
Oh, we're not doing mixed use. Oh, that was another thing, another feedback from, from the neighbors that we, that we took into account.
I appreciate that.
Hi, Kristen Lawal, 12 Southwood Drive. I did it. This is more really a follow-on to the last gentleman's comments or request, if you would consider it. Lisa made the point about pushing back on the state a bit. Mimi, you seem, and correct me if I'm wrong, kind of resistant, or perhaps you're like, it's a non-starter, and correct me if I'm wrong. But, into the point the last woman made, like, forget town meeting, right? And I don't mean to be cynical, but, and I appreciate what you're saying, that this is improving Southborough, but that improvement's all pushed on to the south side. So, you know, while you say this is about Southborough, I do see the issue slightly different. I'm not within the half-mile radius, but I live kind of right across from the Finn area, and myself and my children are always on Corderville. They love going down to Fitzgerald's. I walk down Corderville. I like to cross and go into Hopping Highlands. It's like, guys, look, reach weight, and sprint across the street, because those cars are going so fast, and there's so many. The answer at town meeting will be yes, because the other sides of town, and I hate to say this, will see that, okay, issue's behind us, they're not thinking bigger picture. And I, and I hate to be cynical, and I'm sure some will, but some won't pay attention, and they'll be like, all right, yeah. They don't even know that side, like, some of those, some probably have never even been there, to be honest with you. So, my question to you guys is, would you consider helping us prepare for town meeting and for these letters to the state? Because I think that's a great suggestion, Marty. With things like the traffic study, the environmental study, there's wetlands, which seems to be close proximity to the Sudbury River there. Another consideration I think we need to look at is, what are Hoppington and Ashland considering? Because everyone's trying to push this as far out to their town border as they can, and they both have MBT, you know, Hoppington obviously has the same MBTA station. Ashland's is not far away, so where are they looking to put their housing? Because now we really might be adding even more traffic, because we all know Corderville, Parkerville, all of those roads are cut-throughs. And cars go so fast, because they don't care about Southborough, like, they're not worried about our kids. I mean, it's, it's really quite concerning. So, I don't think we can even just look at Southborough in a vacuum, what are Hoppington and Ashland doing? And, you know, could that convince the state, like, look, you know, fine, half-mile radius, but let's look a few miles beyond that, and what towns are doing? Parking at the T. Pre-COVID, I was, I was taking the T, and it was really hard. I mean, there was times I could not get parking at the T. So, how's that going to work? People are returning to the office. We all know that, right? People want you back in those seats, and a lot of those people are going to Boston. So, how in the heck are we going to accommodate that many more cars in the T parking spots? So, now we are making it more difficult for our own citizens to get a parking spot, well, our current citizens, I should say, and get into town. So, just, I'm adding on to all of the considerations that people have already set. I do think putting 90 units right across residences is just, it's a lot to swallow. We also know the select board is trying to force some 40Bs onto that side of the town, so the south side's feeling it, you know? And so, maybe, would you, and again, I don't expect an answer tonight, but would you consider partnering with the citizens a little bit more concerning some of these points and maybe approach the state to say, hey, look at all of these facts compounded? Because I can't believe that the state, if Milton, or was it Milton, I think, pushing back, let's set a precedent. Like, let's set a precedent for other communities and challenge some of this, because not every community is equal. And it seems to me, from what I've learned tonight, and that was a great presentation, is they're treating every community like it's equal. And you just can't do that, right? Every community has their own situation. Some may be more underdeveloped. We're highly developed. So, that would be the request. Can we, can we take this a little bit further? Not just throw in the towel and say, it's the law, we got to do it, but present facts back to the state to say, hey, can we sit down and talk about this a little bit more? Thank you.
Just, just to be clear, 12 acres of the 60 acres overall is in that train station. So, it's not all down in that area. It's, it's 10, 10 of the 60. We have 59 point-
Oh, yes, right. 60 of the 60. Yes.
And I think, I think Milton pushed back on their classification as a rapid transit, because they have a little trolley car that goes through town twice a day, and they don't think that they're rapid transit. And, you know, I'm not an attorney, but I think they have a point there. So, it's a completely different thing. But, so then again, we could, we could do that, but we would open ourselves up to lawsuits. And as Mr. Stein said, we would lose control. It wouldn't be up to us where these, where these units went.
I, I just, as far as my, I think it's a request by others, we're not so afraid of lawsuits. I'm just, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes, sir.
John Cage again, 6 Parker Street. Just, I can help out with some of these questions, I guess. I mean, the, the MBTA Community Act originally, as it's, as it's actually written, states that the half-mile of the train station is 50 acres. The planning board has already gone in and gotten that modified. You know, the state has already given us a bit of a bone. And the concern dealing with the other towns, you know, Ashland has to do, they have the train station there, so they have to put it within half-mile of their train station. I don't know if they've gotten some sort of, also a gimme. Again, with Southborough, we had that gimme because we don't own all of the half-mile. That's Hoppington's property. So, that's why we got our 10-acre reduction, our 50-acre reduction down to 10. Ashland, I don't believe, has that exception. So, their, their half-mile is going to be near their train station, which is not going to be close to Southborough, or at least not fairly close to Southborough. Hoppington does not have a train station, but they are served. So, they had a little bit of a flexibility of, they could put their 50 acres anywhere. And they had attempted to push that towards Southborough side near Carboni's. That did go to town vote, and it failed town vote. I don't believe there was like 100 and something people came to the town, not the 9,000 people that live in Hoppington. So, it's, while it's going to be contentious, that's some glimmer of hope for those who want to vote no, is not everybody shows up to town and vote. But they are pushing that again to, they've redone their map, and they are looking at Carboni's. And while there is an effect there for Southborough, dealing with traffic, there's also another part, is where Carboni's currently gets their water from, which is not Hoppington, it's Southborough. So, you know, this is something that I believe the town actually, when they come for their building permits, will have to have that negotiation and conversation with when they want to build that area, is they do have to actually get their water from us, and we have the ability to say something about that. But that would be something that we'd have to all pay attention to in a town meeting or a planning board meeting, zoning board meeting, wherever that meeting that would be. So, there's a lot of effect here, but the board is just attempting to meet the requirement of law, because that is their physical job. But we need to go to the town meeting, and, which is part of the reason why it didn't happen in March, it's probably going to happen in September, is we need to be active, we need to be, talk to our neighbors. You know, I'm the only neighbor from 6, from Parker Street here, but I talk to all my neighbors in Parker Street and Hammond Street and Highland, the edge, my edge of the Highland where I live, and just to let people know what's going on. And so, they are informed, and they will be showing up in September to cast that vote. Thanks.
Thank you. And John has gone through this whole process with us since day one.
It's been fun.
Mimi, can I, can I make one more comment? Kristin, to your point, so thank you for speaking. You knew you had to hear from me, right? We wrote a very comprehensive letter, and I'm happy to share that and download it to you, but I think that's a great starting point for people to write to the state and to encourage their, to think about this as a different community, and that it isn't walkable. It, it's very rural, that it isn't developed like a lot of towns are. And I think that if they hear from more than the people from the board, maybe there's an opportunity they can actually get in a car and drive out and, and see the land. That could make a difference. We don't know if it can or not, but we're going to try and parallel path it and see the best that we can. But I'm happy to, to share that. It's a great starting point.
Mimi, can I add one thing to that? Also, Kristin, I think in letters that anybody sends to the state, we need to be clear that Corderville is the most affordable homes in the town of Southborough. And to possibly lose that has a huge effect, you know? Not just historically, a lot of these are mill homes and whatnot. So, I would encourage you, if you're going to write letters, and like Marty said, I think we put that in the letter anyway, but I think that's a very important point to make, is what Southborough is actually losing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm back up. I think that's a great idea, okay?
Could you just state one more time your name?
Oh, yes, sorry. Jim Waddell, 21 Darlene Drive. It would be great if you could share who we would send that to, okay? And Lisa, I like your suggestion a lot, so, and if you could share that tonight, that would be great. Thank you.
It's on the website.
Hello, Paul Desmond again, 5 Pine Cone Lane. I should mention, I'm a member of CHOPSE, the Affordable Housing Group in town, as well as the Regional School Committee, and I mentioned the latter mainly because, Mimi, I think you were spot-on with Madison Place. And last, I think, when it was first developed, it contributed about a dozen students, maybe it's 10 now, but yeah, the effect is minimal. But basically, what I wanted to say is, is I do support the spirit of this law. I agree, agree with all the things that James said earlier. I mean, we face a housing crisis in this country, and certainly in this state. And if we're going to be honest with ourselves, I mean, we have to admit that towns like Southborough, where large lots and expensive homes, you know, dominate, are certainly part of the problem. So, this law was intended as, as a step in addressing that, you know? Is it perfect? No, we've heard that here tonight. But again, I think it's important that we embrace the spirit of it, and that being the need for more housing options, including more affordable options. And I know technically only 10% of this is supposed to be affordable, but I would argue that the type of homes that we're going to be building here compared to the rest of Southborough are affordable. And I appreciate the difficulty of this task. You know, some great points have been made here about the potentially adverse effects on Southborough, given especially the limited space near the train station. Marty, I think your sentiment about having someone from the state come down and actually look at it would, would make a big difference if we could ever make that happen. But at any rate, I, I just want to applaud the planning board. I know you've been working on this for an awful long time, and I appreciate that, your efforts in just doing the best to address this. Thank you. that, your efforts in just doing the best to address this. Thank you.
Let me look. Hold on a second. Let's go back there. We currently have 11 attendees, no hands raised in the Zoom attendee list.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road again. Thank you for that, that input on writing the state because I think there's a lot of situations on the Corderville area that are different than other communities. Definitely challenges. I'm going to urge you though to look at those two lots. And what I will say about the housing in Southborough, if you wanted to pick, to comply with the intent of the bylaw, ready to build, we're units, you could have looked at the whole town and see where was there going to be the least impact. These two lots have a lot of impact to a densely built neighborhood, really densely built out. And the comments about, I've heard people say that, oh, nobody came and, you know, talked about it, they should have known, even though they're not in the half mile, they should, you know, when you look at the people who live on Southville Road, it's the most affordable area. Many people who are somewhat marginalized by Southborough standards, people working two jobs, maybe new immigrants, English as a secret language. I know who lives around me, they're not coming to these meetings because they're not in the same atmosphere as many of the other residents of Southborough, working two jobs, caring for sick husbands and children, you know? So give some consideration to the people who live in these more affordable units are not coming to town meeting halls like this. You know, I didn't see many people who live in Southville Road at those meetings, and I know why. And it's not because they should be punished because of that. I think you need to look at what this impact of these two large lots is going to have for the fact that they are ready to go. And I'm saying that because I've heard that the owner wants to build housing there. One of its four acres undeveloped. And I personally have worked hard to see somehow to get affordable housing in town. And believe me, this is not affordable. It's less expensive, 10% of the median income. And what I see happens, you're going to get housing that, you know, replaces where people can come in, especially not in these two lots, because that's just going to be apartments, right, or condos. But the other units, it's going to replace lots where a family can come into Southborough and maybe get a piece of the American dream. You know, a more affordable home in Southborough. And what's it going to be replaced with? And I know what happened in other communities. They'll build up, you know, multi-units, million dollar, you know, apartments, whatever. It's not going to be, you know, the 10% median income, okay, you're going to get 10% at the 80% median income, which is a single person making 100 grand a year, right? That's not the income that the people who live, many of the people who live on Southville Road area, that's not their income. It just isn't. So you're going to price people out who could afford to live there. So that's not a great thing. It's already densely built out and it should be celebrated. And I'm sorry, I urge you to look at those six acres and consider the impact to the people who live around there, who are already dealing with all of the traffic. And what somebody else said, we're right, people just aren't going to care about Southville Road. We're looking to the planning board to do that for us. And I've said this throughout this whole time, anyone who knows on Facebook groups, we trust the planning board. And I did too, until I saw these units that you had to go out of your way to include without talking to anyone about the impact, the impact of that development. And particularly, I don't think one of the houses across the street from this were in the originals, not, none of them were in the original zone, but they're not even in the new zone when you moved it.
Excuse me, Freddie. I know you've said a lot of this before. It's past nine o'clock.
Okay.
You've had your voice, we've heard you.
I know. I always stood up again because other people.
And if there's other people, I think we should let them speak before we move on to another topic. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Suzanne Gilfix. I'm on 18 Darlene Drive. It'll be 30 years next week that my husband and I have lived here. I'm just echoing some of the very eloquent statements of those residents who are far more educated than I on this issue, representing the South Side of town, concerned about the density, the impact on the environment, impact of schools, as well as just pushing back on the state. I formerly was in the Attorney General's office many years ago. I can safely say that there is an effort from the Commonwealth to negotiate with its citizens. And I very much appreciate the recommendation to have us download letters and send them. And so thank you for that. I think that's super helpful. I was out of state at the last meeting and I regret that I was not here, but I appreciate the work that you continue to do. And I would just urge you to take a bit more of an aggressive tone, maybe collaborate with other towns either adjacent to us, has been mentioned, or others in the Commonwealth, because that is the expression of democracy, to really combat and potentially amend or reverse some of the implications of this law for the betterment of our, of our beautiful town. And I would be, again, happy to participate in future meetings and will certainly show up for the vote. But we do look to you and we appreciate your representing us for those interests, just speaking from the South Side. Thank you.
So anyone else before we move on? Anyone online want to speak?
Eight attendees and no hands raised in the Zoom room. Colleen just passed out and there's some additional copies in the back of the letter that the Select Board and Planning Board sent to the EO HLC.
And the address is right on top.
And the address for Chris Clutchman, the contact there is right on top.
I would say maybe if we make the Word document available, because that's PDF, the Word is always easier to copy and paste if you want to do that. So we can certainly provide that.
Yeah, they can either email me or see if I can get a Word doc.
I don't think anyone can hear you when you're.
Yeah, I am.
But you're a mile away.
I know. I don't know if I can post a Word doc, but I can look into it. Oh, you can. Okay. Then we'll do that. Because the letter is already on our website. And it's got a lot of attachments.
Okay. Do we continue this public hearing till August 19?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demirio, yes.
Rashia, yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you all for coming.
So I have one question. I hope I can still ask it, even though we just extended. So should we wait to try and get a preapproval from the state? Should we try and find another? We're, we're done with Bowler, like they won't run anything else, but if we're going to look at something else? Or should we just submit this and continue to work on pushing back with the state and perhaps finding something else? Okay.
I was going to say yes. We should definitely send it into the state because they'll give us some ideas of maybe what we can fix or opportunities, but let us know how we're doing. So I think we should.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Planning Board appointments and recommendations to the Select Board for appointments. Is there anything?
Yes. I think, hold on, I want to get back to the mic.
I think we need a couple of people on the Master Plan Implementation Committee? Is that what we're looking for?
I think one of the reasons this was on the agenda was because there were some recommendations of the Planning Board to the Select Board for certain seats that weren't followed through. I don't know how else to put it. And so I think we kept this on here if there was any discussion about that, if there was any follow-up, if you recall, unless that's already a done deal.
I think we discussed that with the Select Board whenever we were there the last time.
The tree hearings.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that was already discussed. So what's left here is that the only two, we need a member for the Deed Research Subcommittee if anybody's interested. And they could contact me at the planning office. And I can explain what it is a little bit better.
Does it have to be someone from the Open Space Preservation Commission?
Vacancy was not a Planning Board member.
Oh, it wasn't?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. We'll have to do further research on that.
But do we, did we appoint that? Is that a Planning Board appointment?
Yes. So the Deed Research, we had three appointees and then they were appointed and then one of the members resigned. So Freddie's no longer on it. She had resigned from that. So we're, I think that's an Open Space Preservation Commission. Freddie, are you still on the Open Space Preservation Commission, correct?
I'm the chair.
Yes. So I think maybe you could recommend, talk to your commission to, if anyone else is interested in joining there. I know your plate's full, a lot of stuff, so. Then for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Debbie, maybe you can speak to this. William Moran was still outstanding as to whether he wanted to re-up or not?
Yeah, still outstanding. I still need to make contact with him.
Okay.
But I think Kat McKee did put in her resignation.
She did. So you still have a quorum?
Yes.
With three members, but you're down one, maybe two.
Putting out the call. Anyone want to be on the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
Yep, they prepare.
Contact Town Planner.
Orderly reports. Yep, let me know. Other than that, everything else was in place until next year. So that's it for that one.
Excuse me. Can I?
You may.
Yeah. So I think one of the things that I just wanted the board to discuss was, you know, it was a little bit concerning to me, the way the Select Board treated the Chair of CHOPSY. And it's very unclear to me what the direction of CHOPSY is as a committee. What the Select Board's intentions are, are not clear to me. So I wanted to just raise with the rest of the board, you know, they did technically vote to reappoint me to CHOPSY with one vote against Mr. Stein. Is this something that we want to actually participate in? I want to just get, I mean, I'm willing to continue serving in the role if we see value in this. It would be a little bit odd to me if they hadn't reappointed me because they rely very heavily on the Planning Department to conduct business. So I wanted to just hear if anybody has any comments or input on planning and CHOPSY.
Well, I'll just jump right in on this one. Jessie, I think you bring a tremendous value to CHOPSY and I think it's important that you retain that seat. I know that there is a potential warrant article to combine CHOPSY and the Affordable Housing Trust. But that's got to pass town meeting. And I think in the, in the interim, if it doesn't pass, I, I think there's a tremendous value, not just for Planning Board, but for you, what you bring to CHOPSY. And I agree with you, it's unfortunate at best, I could use other words, what's taken place on some of the appointments, including Ms. LeVault to CPC. But I don't think that should deter you from doing the good work and what you bring to CHOPSY, especially now. You're almost the senior member on there now. I mean, I think what Dorian created when she took over as CHOPSY, it was almost defunct. And she brought a very good core group of people together. And I think a tremendous job was done. I think there was a lot of administrative things that needed to get done, the housing plan and a ton of other things. I could go on. But I personally, Jessie, think you bring tremendous value and it would be a shame for the citizens of Southborough if you didn't retain that seat.
Ms. Houlihan?
Yes, I'd like to echo Lisa's comments. I think you bring tremendous value. Further, I think that entire Select Board was concerning on many fronts. I think that, we don't need to get into it, but the behavior was not okay. There were Planning Board recommendations. There were recommendations for just a nod of approval for Select Board to go ahead and, and get the right people and retain the right people on boards. Ms. LeVault, Dorian, Jessie, I can't even believe there was a bit of a discussion. It was very alarming and I think that this town needs to, like, keep a very strong attention to what's going on and make sure that you are paying attention to what is going on in the Select Board. I think the Planning Board is the voice of the elected, of our people who elected, elected us. And I think you need to pay attention. So I'm just going to say, we need to retain some power in some of these committees to be able to make sure that we are collaborative, cross-functional, we're aligning towards a vision and goal of Southborough, which I'm not sure everybody in elected positions in this town is. So I think you're highly valued, Jessie, and I'd really encourage you to stay.
Okay. Well, it seems like the consensus on the board is for me to continue in that role, which I'm happy to do. And I really appreciate everybody's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with what everybody else said, Jessie, and I think it would be a disservice to the, the residents to have you step off because that's a very important committee. And I think the Planning Board needs to stay involved in that. There is the, trying to find the correct word. There is the belief by some on the Select Board that because they're the appointing authority, that any board or committee member must sign a loyalty pledge to the Select Board. And first of all, that's ludicrous. That would mean you would have to, you know, change your function after every single election. That makes no sense. Most of the boards and committees were created by town meeting and the loyalty is to the charge that was voted on, on town meeting, not whatever the whims of the, the Select Board are. In addition, that is in complete contrast to the Mass Municipals Association Select Board Handbook, which says, although the Select Board is the appointing authority in many cases, boards and committees
Recording in progress.
must be able to operate unimpeded and follow their charge. So whatever's going on in the Select Board is just not right. And for them to push away some very valued, long-time volunteers when we are, you know, in need of volunteers in the town is just a travesty. And probably the reason why we need so many volunteers when they watch and see people be treated like that. Anything else on this subject?
First hand, Jessie.
The next item on the agenda is 120 Turnpike Road.
I can, I can.
Maybe just a point of order. I mean, we have some folks here that are on 250 and I mean, it's been a long meeting. I know, can, can you rearrange the?
Oh, sure.
Carvell is going to be probably speaking for both and some folks aside that they may maybe leave a letter. Is it okay, the flip? I don't want to mess anybody up.
That's fine.
Or, is it okay?
I take it back. The next item on the agenda is 250 Turnpike Road.
I can give a very brief status of the ZBA's comprehensive permit application. The, they opened the public hearing in June 26, 2024. It was continued to August 21, 2024. There is a plan proposed with 28 townhomes that was presented at the ZBA. And last I heard, as of July 17, the ZBA was awaiting complete plans for that proposal of that, of that newer concept layout of the 28 townhouses. the ZBA was awaiting complete plans for that proposal of that newer concept layout of the 28 townhouses.
Yes, and I watched that hearing and that new concept plan was very well received. So hopefully, the plan is to get the engineered plans and have them peer reviewed prior to the next meeting. Mr. Stein?
Yeah, there's nothing actually before us, correct? I'm just, that's it, no question.
Just an update so the board is kept in the loop.
No, and my understanding was it was a resident and Ferris collaboration for the townhome. So I think that's in an ideal world situation. So I'm so glad that that was able to move forward and we'll see if anything does move forward.
Mr. Murray?
I have nothing further to add, but it looks like it's going in the right direction, which is really nice.
I'm good, thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? No? Anyone online?
We have five attendees, no hands raised.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, 120 Turnpike Road.
A quick little update on this. The public hearing opened in December of 2023. The public hearing was continued, this is for the ZBA Comprehensive Permit 40B, was continued to July 31, 2024. There were no updated plans received yet of a new concept, which was a six-story with a larger footprint building, 70 feet by 210 feet, and a land donation and covered parking structure, which was dated June 5, 2024. The ZBA is expecting updated plans the week of July 15. I don't know if that has happened yet, but there's still, I believe we got feedback from the ZBA, from the attorney, George Banon, that they're still working on those plans. So that's moving forward.
So the, so the ZBA hadn't received updated plans as of their meeting on Wednesday?
Correct.
So I don't know if they would be able to do a peer review at this time prior to the 31st?
That's very tight. That's really a tight schedule because it's the 22nd. You know, you need at least two weeks for a peer review and that's when you get it. So I agree with you, that seems tight.
And the other reason this is on the agenda is that our last meeting, when Ms. Cook was here, we had mentioned that we found out that previous Wednesday night that town council had been speaking with the proponents and they had made the decision that they no longer needed to come before the planning board for modification of the site plan. And Kathy Cook was going to speak to town council regarding that, which she did. And town council was adamant that he didn't need to come, that they don't need to come before the planning board to modify the, that condition regarding the donation of the land, that he said that it didn't, that it didn't reference the plan, although it says in the decision it did. And my question was that there was no commitment to donate any land. If you read that, it said might. In my, so if, and she insisted that there was a, the intention was to donate that land. So my question was, okay, then why don't they just do it as Mr. Murray mentioned? So town council has office hours tomorrow, which Karina and I are going to. And if there's anyone else who's not a quorum that wants to come. And if the board is in agreement, that will be the question I will ask. But he did say that they need to come for the reduction in parking and the changing of the site. So the modification does need to be done. Any, any other?
Well, the other question, just going back to how this whole thing started. Am I, am I confused, I must be confused because I thought it was Mr. Tallerman that pointed out that there was an issue with the land donation in the very first place. So what has caught, my question, if I were able to go, which I'm not unfortunately, but I would love to ask him, what changed over the last 45 days or whatever this has been?
So the planning board's letter in October brought this up. And after much communication and then finally going to office hours with town council, he agreed that this was a, was an issue. He, the reason, what has changed is he thinks that the, that this 6.2 acres on the recent concept plan would satisfy that condition. Which is, so that's another question. And I want to make sure that we know the exact process as he sees it.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, we need guidance and legal counsel.
If only.
And I guess the other question would be, well, I don't.
I'm open for questions. Let us just go through the board first.
I have nothing to add. I think it's equal frustration. I think that we would like to actually see them donate the land and just start the process. Why bother waiting? Because they, this is what was started in 2020. Whatever administratively didn't happen because of COVID, but there was some action that was taken. It just didn't follow through. I think we just need to follow that through and that is Mr. Tallerman's job to make sure that happens. It's my opinion.
Mimi, I'd be interested to join you if I can tomorrow.
10:00 AM?
10:00 AM.
The 3 is a crowd, that's it.
Yeah, unless somebody else wants to go, of course. I guess one thing I am not sure about is, this is another example of putting the cart before the horse. Why does it have to be like a little bit like smoke and mirrors? I totally agree, like why not just do what we need to do and donate the land? And I think that that was a condition for planning, of a planning board site plan. So we get to decide. And I think that is maybe the point of when Ms. Cook was here, is to say, you know, we need to be more collaborative about this and that we can't just get pushed aside because maybe it's inconvenient or something like this. That the proponent has to come to us in one way or another. I'm not sure if it's an A and R or if that's been decided, if it's subdivision control, but that is maybe a question I have, that I just don't know the answer to. How is, how is it done? But it should be done.
I have no questions other than just frustration that here it is, how long after all this started, we're still having the same discussions and we're still fighting for the same things based on what was in, and again, I wasn't even on the board then, what was, you know, in an approved plan. It's a little ridiculous to me, so I certainly will not be going tomorrow feeling the way that I feel. But thank you, Debbie and Mimi, for doing this. I don't know how much more strongly we can let our opinions be known. I don't know what else we can do at this point, other than just continue to beat our head on the table over what's right. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any comments?
Freddie Gillespie, I'm speaking as chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. When we were here at the first presentation of the six-story tall building, moved off the conservation area onto the parking lot, we had reviewed those plans and supported the idea with full understanding they would need to come back to the planning board for a site plan modification because there were multiple things changed. One is a building in a parking lot of an existing site plan you have for the building lot from the original, I think. And two, they changed the layout of the open space. Now, we would not approve that layout and I had conversations with the attorney in the hall afterwards saying, because it's called a dog park, in the middle of it, there's a dog park playground, which is really a septic field. And it's clear cut to the edge of the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land, which defeats the purpose of what we had supported because you were still going to have a direct view line from the conservation land to the office buildings, the six-story parking, sorry, the six-story building and/or Route 9. Somewhere you're going to be seeing, the site views are going to be changed and you're going to get the light trespass from those buildings and on and on. And I said, can you move it a little so you can put some buffering? Because you can't plant trees on top of that, right? Because it's not just a playground and dog park, it's a septic recharge field. So if that lot is in the same place, aren't we back to the same step of you need to have a site plan modification and you can deny or not deny? This isn't a modification for the new plan, but if they're changing, isn't the, isn't the existing requirement for the old layout of the open space? And if they want to change it, I don't see how your town council can say they, they can, you know, impact what was previously agreed to. So when you're talking about, just give us the land, I hope you're talking about the original acreage shown on the original site plan before they can move forward. And is there a path for you forward to do that? I guess that's the big question. Is there? Without, do you need town council to allow you to enforce an existing site plan?
No.
So what steps can you have a hearing to start that process?
So, yeah. So the building commissioner is the enforcer of planning board decisions.
Has he weighed in on this?
He started on July 1. No.
I guess the question is, can that be a part of the process moving forward? If town council won't move forward, can they put that in his queue? I know it's a big step when he's real new, but I think I would ask that that be a next step you take to just enforce the existing site plan and take possession of the land that we were supposed to already have under our ownership of the town?
One thing, I think that part of the process of land acquisition is the select board accepts it. So I don't know how that works. So there's a, there's a specific process in Mass General Law of how land gets transferred to a town. And I think that the select board has that jurisdiction. Although there is still the issue that it is a condition of an approved site plan. It's a difficult one if you don't have special counsel to give you guidance on what to do.
So.
Well, which is why we're, well, Karina and I had originally wanted to meet with town council at his office hours tomorrow and Debbie's going to to plot this path forward.
Thank you. I just think that it was very disingenuous that we supported the concept plan with the understanding there would be a site plan modification and all of a sudden that's gone away. I don't see how that can happen, so good luck tomorrow. Thank you.
I just have a quick procedural discussion and I might have missed a meeting on this. For the six floors, how does that get approved?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's it?
Although the zoning board of appeals has pushed back on that. So follow the 40B process through the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so just the zoning board, that's it? Got it. Thank you.
Hi, Paul Carter, Six Hill Site Avenue. Trying to follow this stuff relative to the land donation. At the last meeting, I submitted a copy of the garage plan. Shows clearly on the garage plan, the limit of that 6.2 acres. And that's the plan that was referenced in the decision. I thought Tallerman said that, that that was adequate. I thought he said that we, that because of the things that had happened, the decision that it was adequate. Anyway, I thought there was a lot of progress made. The, the new configuration of the 6.2 acres was very convoluted. I have a problem with that. The line that was shown on the plan is appropriate. I think the developer moving the building out of that conservation land is a major step forward and indicates that maybe there's some way that this project can cooperatively and negotiated through this site plan modification. I don't think the developer has anything to be afraid of in terms of having to go through that process with the planning board, assuming that the board and the developer are working together in some way. And the last thing I'll say is that I think it is, the planning board taking a position and the zoning board taking a position on the building height is way past due. That's the major decision that has to be made. If the developer is not going to be allowed to do a six-story building, if he's only going to be allowed to do a three-story building, which is appropriate for Southborough, then the ZBA and the planning board should state that so that the developer can develop a plan that meets that requirement. And I submitted my, my comments regarding that to the ZBA and to the planning board. And, you know, I think that something can be worked out. And I'm, I assume that the developer wants to work something out rather than going around and around and around and trying to subvert or avoid the planning board. I just don't see why this can't happen in some way if people talk specifically about the issues and face the issues.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. It's me, the developer. Right? You get the live guy right in front of you. Hey, look, I just wanted to.
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. My name is David Ferris. I'm here from Southborough. I live at, well, actually, my business address is 118 Turnpike Road. And I just wanted to share a couple of quick comments. I feel like the ZBA and Brian and others are at a pretty close kind of compromise to get this thing done. But I want to just be totally transparent with this board. I've set a deadline. I set it today with all the staff attorneys. I basically gave them till the September deadline to get this done. So if it doesn't get done by September, I'm going to just let the state weigh in and we'll use the fallback plan. I'm happy to be generous, be a benevolent owner of land in the community and donate it consistent with what I think everybody on this board wants, which is a conservation donation. If any of you individually have specific wants, needs, requests, I would say work with the ZBA chair, tell him what they are. I will almost guarantee you, if they're reasonable, rational, I'll listen to them from the ZBA and we'll try and incorporate them. It's their purview at this point. You passed on the change in the language and you gave that decision-making authority to the ZBA. I'm happy to give the land. I think ultimately where you sit now is somebody should raise their hand and say, I take responsibility. I was on watch as a planning board chair. I was on watch as a planning board member. I didn't enforce the donation that I should have for the prior owner. Take responsibility and accept. Someone who is following in the footsteps of the prior owner is stepping forward in the position to benefit the community and give this acreage to the community. Get on board the solution, stop making obstacles and work with your local ZBA and town council, who has already opined. The gift will be accepted and we'll all move forward and we'll get the deal done. But I've made it very clear, after September. But I've made it very clear, after September 17th, 18th, whatever the date is, I'm done. I'm going to let them vote it. And if they vote it down, ZBA, I'm going to let the state opine that the town kicked it, and I'm going to revert to the building being on the conservation plan, because I've done this way too long. You know, I got a text right here on my phone. Marlborough was able to do 200 units in 90 days, because it's good for their community, it's in a remote area, it's an office building get converted, it's going to benefit 20-plus million dollars of tax, actually, 60, 60 million bucks of tax code valuation to them. We work with communities that work with us, we get deals done. This is the most obstructionist process I've ever been through in my career, and I want, Marnie, you want to look shocked, just respond. I'm being, I'm more than willing to donate land. Step aside and let ZBA do what they want, which is accept the land with the conditions that a plan's going to be followed. If you have specific wants, needs, ask the ZBA, and I'll make them happen.
Can I say something? With all due respect, I appreciate you voicing your opinion, but we're an elected board, we don't report to the zoning board. And so the compliance is with the site plan that is with the planning board. It has nothing to do with the zoning board. So the two are being conflated...
But the planning board keeps stepping in and trying to perform a ZBA role, which is over-sensational.
No, when we met in this room was a packed room, the overall sentiment in the room was for you to donate the land, and that would make it much easier for us. We know what our purview...
And what did we do? We said we would work with the community and donate the land.
Well, when will that occur? Because there are other steps that the planning board needs to take in addition to that.
This is, 40B is designed in purpose, and I'll happily bring a state representative to educate this board on what 40B is and how it works. It's designed for ZBA approval, not planning board. I got to make that crystal clear. Like, I don't, I, short of running for this board, I don't know how I'm going to get it through. This is a ZBA decision. Your town council has said, if we donate the land, it's a traditional 40B. I want to help you guys fix a problem that happened on your watch. I'm happy to give the land.
So I just want to point out that it was Mimi, Lutrelli, and myself, and Karina that were meeting with town council, who noticed that you had several attorneys taking a look at that plan that didn't happen to notice about that land donation. So I don't think, we are not in the business of pointing fingers, but it's actually not in our purview. As we heard tonight, it's the building inspector.
So he should have enforced the donation from the prior owner?
There was a letter that... Go ahead.
Okay. Mimi, Karina, wasn't there a letter back in 2020 that went to the select board's department about pursuing the donation of the land from the prior owner, Dave? It wasn't this board. So if you want to say somebody dropped the ball, it isn't the people sitting at this table. There was...
Respectfully, who put the conditions that there should be a gift? The planning board did.
Correct, but the planning board doesn't enforce, and Mimi, correct me if I'm wrong, the planning board makes the decision. We are not the enforcement arm for the town.
Respectfully, if I put a bunch of rules of the road, and I was coming up on a hard deadline, and that attorney missed the filing, you know what that would be? Malpractice. So respectfully, I'm working with the community, you're close to getting the six acres that you asked for, you're being invited and being told directly by the applicant. I will significantly weigh what the ZBA says, and every one of you in your individual capacity or your board capacity can give advisory comments to the governing authority, which is the ZBA, and I'll do my very best to give those and fix the problem that occurred on whoever's watch who made that vote. And then, I mean, think about if you're a town resident. If I were a resident, which I am, of a community, and I had a governing body that said, I'm going to allow you to do X, Y, and Z, but in consideration of allowing those things, I am going to require you to give six acres. And then, on your watch, or the person who set those rules watch did not give the six acres, hell would come to pay. I mean, people should resign over things like this. And what am I doing? I'm stepping forward as a developer after over a year. And by the way, we've worked in some very contested stuff. I mean, I met tonight with two and a half hours of 30 neighbors over at 250, all very rational, reasonable people. 30 people we were able to work with constructively over a year and a half to come up with a compromise plan that achieves the goals of the developer, the goals of the community. And frankly, I think somebody's got to raise their hand and say, I take responsibility. So I think what you should do tonight is you should take a vote. Whose responsibility was it to ensure the prior owner to me owning the property was A, the building inspector, B, Karina as town planner, C, the planning board, or Z, or the ZBA? Who is it? Who is responsible for not enforcing a six-acre donation? Because I can tell you, you thrust all the problem on me. And this is a lot like what I warned this board of. I told this entire board, you are relying on the Bowler opinion, on the ZBA language, on the MBTA stuff. I said to you, I wouldn't rely on civil engineers for legal opinions. I would rely on lawyers for legal opinions and civil engineers for civil engineering opinions. And what happened two weeks later? Big, big mistake, big blow-up. And I'm telling you tonight, respectfully, you pushed it to the end. What everyone on this board ought to do at the end of this evening is work together privately with the ZBA, figure out what you want. What is the need of the community, and how do we get it from A to B? Because I've reached my limit...
Point of order, please? I don't think we're allowed to yell at the planning board during a meeting. You can just tone it down a little, or maybe...
I've reached my limit. We're giving away $5, $6 million of land because of someone's prior mistake, and nobody's stepping forward in owning responsibility. And I'm happy to make that gift to the community, but I want some buy-in from this planning board that some responsibility and some effort to make this plan of affordable housing is good. It's good for you, Freddie. It helps the conservation department.
So, Mr. Ferris, I think we...
Thanks. I think we've understood your point. I think it's time for us to move on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a point of clarification, Bowler did not give us a legal opinion. Bowler did the compliance model, which is a spreadsheet and not a legal opinion, which is why they were civil engineers and not lawyers.
So I'd like to take back everything I said earlier, and I'd like to say that we're back at square one, and we're talking about threats. That's no way to do a project. You won't get anywhere with threats.
Can I just add one final comment here? And correct me if I'm wrong, my fellow board members, did we ever say anything other than working together and wanting to follow the rules? The processes that are in place? That is what we are obligated to do. I don't think we've said, I mean, we had a very productive meeting here, where we talked about a path forward. So I'm a little confused at what I'm hearing here tonight about wanting to point fingers. I thought our role, working collaboratively together, was to find a path forward. And this, to me, is not finding a path forward.
Should we write a letter to the ZBA about the six stories?
Yes, I think we should. But I also think it really becomes evident that we're not obstructionist, we are trying to find a legal path forward. The reason why the De Petri property at Flag Road did not go through is because it was illegal. The planning board actually recognized that. They tried to let town council know that. Town council, special counsel was not provided to them. And I think this is exactly the problem here. It will be illegal because it's not, a modification needs to happen to the site plan, and that we legally believe this, and that we need to pursue this. So I believe that we are not obstructionist, but this is a very smart, well-informed board that wants to do the right thing for the community, and for the developer, and to make sure that everything is right. And so we've raised the question. I think we still need to pursue the conversation with town council. I agree that six feet is not, and we stated that. I think we've been very clear in what we wanted, which is the 6.2 acre donation to happen, not as a contingency of an approval. And number two, as the six-foot is not okay for the culture and what Southborough is.
Six-foot, sorry.
Sorry, six-story, not six-foot. Only people like me could live in a six-foot house.
I can be there, too.
So I, like, I take offense that he, Mr. Ferris, called this board an obstructionist board, because I think that's the last thing that we would ever be classified as. And I think we are now due an apology publicly.
Can I just say one little thing? Okay. So when we, when the planning board approves the site plan, and a decision is written, and it's signed, and it's filed, and it's recorded, does that alleviate the proponent who it is, it's subject, who is subject to this decision from the responsibility of complying? That's my question. I think that it's not, you know, the property owner, and it's purchased with the knowledge of it, and et cetera, aren't they also supposed to be acting towards complying of the site plan?
Yes. Okay. And we follow through, as the condition said, that it needs to go through the select board for their acceptance, and then be given under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. And we did that. Anything else on this subject? The next item on the agenda, planners' report.
Anything on Park Central?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the next item on the agenda, Park Central.
Not to belabor, but...
So Park Central was before the ZBA last Wednesday, and they asked for another extension, because they haven't gone through the court process, and no one was available to come that night, even though when they set the meeting, they were available to come that It seems like the ZBA is losing patience with the continuances at Park Central. So they're due to come back before them on July 31st, but it doesn't appear that the court case will have moved. They haven't even done discovery yet. I guess that's been pushed out a couple months. So who knows what will happen on the 31st, but it appeared from the last ZBA meeting that the ZBA members were losing patience with the constant extensions. And that's all I have for an update on Park Central.
Can I go back to 120 for a second? Do we know when the next ZBA meeting is for 120?
7:30, 7:31.
Yeah, 7:31. And the website is really good there. They have the 40Bs, and everything is updated and listed there. So if there's any question, their calendar is always updated the next day.
Do we want to have a joint meeting, so we can voice our opinion as a board? Either that one or another meeting after that?
Is a quorum available on 7:31?
I can, yes. I can at least be a zone. I'll try to be in person.
Yeah, I can be there. Yeah, so do you want to...
Post a meeting?
Post a meeting for attending the ZBA on 7:31?
I can be there, too.
And then we don't have to write a letter.
Yeah, we can answer any questions.
So at least four of you can be there, right?
I'm Effie.
Oh, yes. I figured, because you're... Okay. All right.
Is it planners' report tonight?
Yes. Well, I'll try to make this quick. So I forwarded an email that the Attorney General approved the 2024 ATM zoning bylaws to add the downtown district to the map, yep, and include expirations for special permits. Remember the two warrant articles? Let's see. No, that was this. This was just from, on June 27, 2020, the AG advised that the bylaws changes voted at the 2024 annual town meeting have been approved, which was Article 36, add downtown district to Chapter 174, and Article 37, include expirations for special permits. Ah, is that, does that seem right? Yeah, okay. I don't question it.
That was the ZBA.
Okay. Special town meeting has been scheduled by the select board for 9:30, and September 30th would spill over to October 1st. Appointments, there's something else here. There's a, Colleen had distributed a draft copy of the draft warrant for special town meeting, in case you haven't seen that. There's no new update on Chapter 61, properties on Northborough Road.
Can I just comment on the draft town meeting warrant?
Yes.
So we had, the chair, the select board chair had reached out to me and asked where we would like our article to go, and I said first, because that's why this special town meeting was called. And zoning's complicated, this is complicated, and we don't want to leave it till late in the meeting when people are tired. So then the draft came out that we were 10 out of 16 articles. So I emailed and said, what's going on? And the chair said she would move things around. So she proposed that at the last select board meeting, and the rest of the select board pushed back and thought we should go at the end so it would keep people at the meeting. So I don't think it is productive to have a complicated zoning article at the end, especially when this is why the meeting was called. And, you know, if the select board wants grant money, then maybe they should rethink that.
I agree. Actually, when Marnie mentioned that, I saw the look on Mr. Dettington's face, and I think he almost for a minute forgot, that they really need to be supporting this board in our pursuit to comply with the MBTA communities and get something passed. And having it late in the agenda, I think, isn't a great idea either. People are just going to give up and go home. And, you know, I guess maybe we should let them know, and, you know, see if they can rework it.
And can I add on top of that, too? If it's last, and God only knows how town meetings go, what if we get halfway through the article? Now it's 11 o'clock. Do you honestly expect a quorum of people to come back potentially the next night for this article as well? And you're going to have to start over, because you may have a whole new group of people that may have missed the whole first part of the discussion when it is so complicated.
I don't think you can do that, take it to another night when you've started it.
Yeah, I think you have to finish it. The moderator will decide if you can start it, and then maybe let you do it, or ask you to move it to the next one.
So at 3:00 AM?
Yeah. Well, we've had one started, you know, five minutes of 11, and we were there till 12, you know, just to get through it.
So, Mimi, did a new number system come out after their planning, their meeting? Because I attended their meeting, and I thought they did keep it as number one. I thought they moved it up to number one, and then they were debating the other line items. Has it revised?
I haven't seen a revised. They had, they thought that some of the items would be consent items, but they left two, which I think will be long discussion, complicated things. Breakneck Hill and Atwood are before us.
They did leave those there.
I think they moved, hiring a full-time EDC coordinator to after.
So what is the plan, to just say, we really think this has to be number one?
Or, so I don't mind if it's after consent items. There are some things, like changing the number on some committees, or there are some inactive committees that they want to get rid of. So I think those will be quick, but I think we should go right after the consent items.
Especially since you didn't get to go at the last town.
Well, especially since you didn't get to go at the last town meeting.
Totally.
You know, you should be first up. And fall is really a time for zoning.
I thought they committed to us that we would be first up on that last meeting when we withdrew.
That's the one from the packet, their packet.
Oh, yeah. So we were 10 out of 16. So I think they moved Economic Development Coordinator after us.
Sometimes I do wonder what our Select Board is doing.
Sorry, Karina, you can continue.
Let's get back. So Chapter 61, Northborough Road Properties, we don't have any feedback on that. I think that kind of faded. We didn't have a bona fide offer. That was, was determined, and then nothing came after the letter that the planning board submitted on, in June, I think June 17th or so, to the Select Board. ARPA funds were moving forward. We have, I think I mentioned at last meeting, some of the GIS changes have already been incorporated, so we're working for, further on that. We did get the open space monitoring report for fiscal year '24. I'm hoping to review that next week. And then, at some point, we'll invite Lucas Environmental to present to the board, most likely early fall, when people are back from vacation. We did have performance evaluations, and the Personnel Board approved Colleen and mine's increases for this year for fiscal year '25. So, that's good. Thanks for that, and we thank the Personnel Board, too, for following through on that. And that is it. We already did the meeting minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
And that's a second.
Any discussion?
No.
Seeing no, no in favor? Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes?
Bracio, yes.
Okay. Do you have to start? Okay.